The regular meeting of the Red Oak City. This Monday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty five, five thirty P M here at the Red Oak Fire Station located at nineteen oh four North Broadway. Just a reminder that this meeting is is available on Zoom and is being recorded and will be available on our website. We ask that all audience members, please put yourself online in silence. If you do have to take a call, please excuse yourself to the back hallway. This is a business meeting of the Red Oak City Council, and so we do ask that people refrain from side conversations unless you're speaking during public comments. Invocation by Pastor Gary Walters and Grace Knapp's Church.
Great. Father, we come before you tonight. Are grateful that you're God who is ever present, a God who is loving, a God who will continue to protect us in these kind of times from evil. And Lord, we thank you for being forgiving with us. Lord, on on this special day in our lives, may we rejoice in what you've done. We pray and lift before you those as there's a change in leadership of our country. And we pray, Father, that you would give each of them, as men and women, a spirit of discernment to know that which is right and wrong, and as they lead us, we pray that we'll willingly follow them. We pray for our city administrator and mayor's decisions they continue to make, as well as the council members who work with them, and may they continue to desire to lead and develop our community in a way that we'll all be pleased with. We pray today for those of the victims of Helane and also the fire victims, all the needs that they have, many needs, and thank you for those many people who have risen to help them physically and mentally and financially in many ways. Then, Father, we're grateful for the hostages that have been released just recently. And Lord, for for them, as they've been reunited with their family and friends, we pray that there will be healing for them mentally, emotionally, relationally. Fathers, this meeting continues on. May you be the director of our words, and as the scripture says, may the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. In Jesus' name we pray. Well, thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Martin Luther King Day and Happy Inauguration Day. It has been brought forward that we all need to speak up, especially me. I think my voice is quiet. So we'll do our best. If you cannot hear, please just raise your hand and allude to you can't hear. Hear us, and we'll try to do our best to increase our volume. I feel like I'm screaming, but apparently to others, they can't hear me. So, all right, roll call. Ashley.
Bradley.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Bradel.
Here.
Hidsey.
Brandon.
Hee-Frey.
Here.
Number five, approval of the agenda.
I'm listening.
Bradley.
One second.
Bradel. Roll call. Bills.
Yes.
Bradel.
Yes.
Hidsey.
Yes.
Hee-Frey.
Yes.
Number six. Bradley. Yeah, sorry. Number six, proclamation, special notices. I don't believe we have any this time. We need to think about it. I need to think about that for next time. If anybody has any recommendations, please let me know. Number seven, public comments. Just note that this is, you have a three-minute limit. You must sign in and state your name and address. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and then we'll, Ashley will time for three minutes. So we will indicate when you have ten seconds left, and then that gives you ten seconds to wrap up your last thought. So, all right, looks like the first one we have is Levi Franks Junior.
Thank you. Levi Franks Junior did the final seven days now for about fifty years now. But it's, uh, it's, uh, they don't want the city of Red Oak controlling my garbage pickup. I want to get where I'm on for my garbage to pick up. Do you think the city will make a difference? It won't. Make people clean up their property if the trash is in it. I thought you had orders here in the Red Oak to keep the property cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron King. Kevin, I'll have you go last since you sent a letter.
Morning.
Go ahead, Ron.
I'm one of these people who does not have a garbage can. And I feel no reason that anybody should tell me I have to have a garbage.
Ron, you touch where you live, please.
On the five one nine West Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
Um. I pay for the city landfill. I pay for the recycling on my water meter. I use both of them. So I recycle almost everything I have or compost it. I use the city lea dump and the tree dump. I go by the rules. I didn't leave any plastic bags, refuge, and stuff like that. I take what little I have left, maybe, maybe a little bag like this at the end of a week, maybe a week and a half. I have friends who live outside the city limits. If I need to go, I will take that and I will put it in a burn house. And then maybe after, I don't know, six months, eight months, when we get a couple of rivers, then we'll pull together and what they get to the land, we'll donate. And I feel I have no reason if somebody could force me to pay anybody without my choosing, any kind of thing. I don't think anybody has a right to tell me to do that. I don't think that anybody should be controlled by the city or any government body. That is, we already have rules. If I do something wrong, I feel that they will come and serve me and find me and do whatever is necessary under the rules that we already have. I guess I just feel that every time we get with government, the first thing happens is bill break. Then the fees go up and the crisis goes up. And then we make another law or whatever you call this, you call it, I don't know what you call it. We just make another one and have more, more leverage. I think the people of the United States, it's like, they don't want this. And I believe if you would put this on the ballot for the people, let them vote on it, then we could see how, how many. I've talked to people, mostly from the ages of mid forties on up. I have not seen anybody that agrees with this. I found some people that don't know what's happening. Other people say, don't matter, we'll put a force down your throat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Beau Harris.
Hi, I'm Beau Harris, twenty one oh four Sunny Slow Drive. And can you explain to me why you want to change the garbage? Why are we doing this? Why are you doing this?
We're not here for question answers, Beau. If you got a statement to make, you can make a statement.
I mean.
We'll explain it a little bit.
Okay. Is there, can you tell me the current number of offenders?
We have quite a few.
Okay.
We have about six hundred households that are not taking trash service.
And and the city administrators notes that said there was fifty-three nuisance properties.
That's current. That's our current nuisance officers.
Does the council really think that by passing a garbage collection ordinance, that they're going to change the appearance, some of these properties in town? I mean, you've got a nuisance ordinance on the books now, and that doesn't seem to be. I've lived here off and on for over fifty years, and some of those properties that look like that the whole time I've lived here. I think you need to enforce the code you got rather than bring in new codes. Another thing on the urban chickens, I noticed reading through that, there's no mention in that ordinance about a building permit. You tell them they have to build a hut or a house or something, but there's no mention of a building permit there. And then on your fire ordinance, fire cracker ordinance, are you spamming that for almost over a month? What is that? Did I misread that? I thought it said from June first till July eighth?
We can talk about that. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it when we get to the agenda. Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's all I have to say. I'm just kind of curious why you're doing some of these things.
Can I sign in?
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't sign in either. Or do I need to?
Yes.
If you're speaking, you have to be on the list.
Sorry.
Jenny Horner, you are up next.
I'm your left founder.
I am.
Must be artistic.
I've always been in awe of people that can write with that other hand.
I don't know what to get dang though.
Buddy, I noticed left hand is the best hand already.
Yeah. No.
That's what?
She's laughing because she's left handed.
All right.
Sorry.
This was a special occurrence. Normally, we would not do that because it's an interruption. So, all right.
Jenny Horner.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Jenny Horner. I live at seventeen thirty-two, two hundred sixtieth Street. Um, and I'm part of the landfill diversion ad hoc committee. Thank you to Mayor Silvius for kind of making that official as an ad hoc committee in February of two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm just here to uh, share what we've been talking about. We do support Red Oak implementing Iowa Code four five five D point two one. A city council or county board of supervisors, which provides for the collection of solid waste by its residents, shall consider as a proposed ordinance the mandatory curbside collection of recyclable materials, which have been separated from other waste. So we are in support of a proposal that would support curbside collection of recyclables and also curbside collection of garbage to all of the city residents. By doing that, you are being economical because you're allowing people to all pay in to the system to provide better service for less money, and you're also encouraging people to to get rid of their waste in a more ecologically friendly manner, maybe fewer trucks on the road as well, uh, which can save the city money. And also, we'd also like to support kind of a a different idea that maybe some of you haven't heard about. Humboldt, Iowa participates in a pay-as-you-throw program. So there's kind of a base fee. This refers to garbage collection. There's a base fee, and then residents, as they uh, have trash, will will only pay for what they throw. So people who recycle a lot are are encouraged to do so, and they're, and they benefit from that because recycling is basically free. And and then they only pay for the bags for the trash that they produce, so they can recycle compost and get rid of their waste in other ways that are more economical and ecological, and that would incentivize people to be recycling more and um, and and I think it would clean up Red Oak. I definitely think that people would, if they are already paying into the system at a minimal cost, I think they would take advantage of the fact that they can have waste collected at their door. And there's lots of other creative and interesting things that can be done as well for larger items. There are tickets that people can purchase from the city, tags that people can put to give people a chance to dispose of some of those recliners and beds and things that often people are just left leaving in their backyards and things like that, or disposing in places that are not good for the environment or for the appearance of the city. So thank you. I just wanted to think like that.
Thank you, Jenny. Is it Kate Pelzer?
I'm Kate Pelzer, thousand seven Eastern Avenue. My opinion on the garbage thing is, uh, I do think that things that need cleaned up in the town, I agree. But I think when you drive around town, it's not necessarily all the garbage, or, you know, I don't notice garbage and stuff like that sitting around. It's old cars, uh, beds, furniture, stuff like that, that they throw along the curb or park in their backyard. Garbage companies isn't going to take that kind of stuff. Uh, personally, me, I have a farm north of town. I already pay Kevin garbage pickup. Why do I need to pay for it twice? There's a lot of people in town that own a business that they just take their trash there and just get charged for it once. Also, there's no reason for people paying twice. Next thing is, is, you know, we've already got people that can't pay their water and sewer bill. So do you think if we raise that, that's going to help them afford their water and sewer bill if we add trash to it? And I just, I feel like the people that don't pick up their trash now probably aren't going to pick up their trash when we have a trash service here. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Lynette first.
As you're going to hear from Lisa, we didn't meet with her this week. We are grateful for wanting to stay local and giving us the opportunity. However, we don't feel is up to us to convince you to vote the mandatory curbside. But for you to listen to what the people have voted, that voted you into this position want. I really don't feel our problem is actually trash. It's more junk. And those curbside toters are not the answer. The cost of those toters, it's seventy dollars apiece. We go long ways towards the citywide cleanup and enforce the codes, maybe door hangers, shorter timelines for violate, would make that shorter time for violators. Yes, rental properties are a problem. So make the landlords responsible. We have Baton sanitation. Hope you both know to curbside mandatory garbage with toters, and let us help you clean up the town. Thank you. And I'm not against talking with Lisa, but just don't see the reasoning at this point. Let us help you with cleaning up first and see where this goes. Thank you.
And Kevin Carlisle from Town and Country had sent us a letter, and he's on the agenda here to speak during this public comment. You two have three minutes.
Yeah, I've got some more. I just, so in case I get to rambling.
I know.
There's no, that front one is, the front one is what?
I have the letter. I don't have what's behind it.
You don't have what's behind it. Well, in addition to the letter that I emailed the council, um, I guess I would like to thank the council and the city administration for open discussions on the proposal of mandatory trash. I understand the goal of cleaning up the appearance of town, and I'm not against that or the idea of mandatory trash. At this point in discussions, I'm here to share my observations and pose some questions. Are you hearing from the public what they want? Customers I am hearing from want to choose their own hauler, and I tell them they need to express that to you and for their voices to be taken into consideration. Hearing from so many customers who are against it, I'm not comfortable appearing to be moving ahead with a plan that has not yet been decided on. I'm looking for the council's consideration first, or council's consideration first, and would like to have a conversation with all, with all of you. I drove to the city and encourage you to do the same if you have not. I saw trash issues, but I also saw more than household trash. I saw a lot of things that cannot be hauled with a garbage truck. What, what will the plan be for non-household trash? Would you consider addressing those issues before moving forward with mandatory trash service? Some previous public comments were littering issues. How will that be addressed? What will the implementation plan be? What is the plan for enforcement of mandatory trash if there is not enough time or resources to enforce the current ordinance? What happens when people don't pay? Or if they leave town and trash is piled up, who will clean it up at that point? And any other options that are considered? Citywide cleanups? Rewrite the current ordinance to address the current issues and make it more enforceable? Would it be possible for Baton sanitation and Town and Country sanitation to be a part of a workshop with the council members, administration, including the nuisance officer, allowing for more clear communication to meet your goals to, uh, of cleaning up the appearance of town? I did a little bit of research. Keep in mind, I'm, I'm sure I missed some. Uh, this is what I found. This is garbage only and did not write down if it was in a can and sticking out of the top of the can. I found two trailers with trash bags on them, three pickups with trash bags in the bed, one of which had a tarp that was secured and appeared like it was going to the landfill soon. Eleven properties with excessive garbage, in which at least four of them were stops of mine for non-payment. I was told that an average monthly water shut-off, there are thirty-six.
That's time.
I got a few more things. Sixty.
That's true.
Time's up.
Sorry, Governor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Will you leave?
All right, number eight, consent agenda. This includes the minutes of the, of the city council from January sixth, twenty twenty-five, and the special session that was with landlords on the rental inspection program for one thirteen twenty-five, as well as the annual liquor liquor license with Lepe Garcia Corporation, or also known as Casa de Oro.
Okay, approve, good job.
Okay, Hidsey.
One second.
And Hee-Frey. Roll call. Bradel.
Yes.
Hidsey.
Yeah.
Hee-Frey.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yeah.
Bill.
Yes.
Number nine, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, city claims, the December two thousand and twenty-four warrant, and the utility deposit refunds. Did we have any?
Additional.
I was gonna say. Yeah. Those are in addition to what was in the.
I move to approve.
Okay, Bradel.
I'll second.
And Bradley.
So I'd like to make a comment. So I had a meeting. Actually, it was, he doesn't live in my ward, but a businessman here in town had a bunch of questions on some of our claims from the last couple of months, and they were very legitimate questions, but I talked with our staff and they were very easily answered. But, uh, they're, you know, administrative errors can be overlooked, and I, you know, I, I think as a council, we need to pay a little closer attention to what's going on with, with, with what we actually approve and, and don't on our warrants and claims. We just need to pay closer attention. That's all. I'll say no more.
Well, I think as a council, we, we have the opportunity to review those at least two or three days ahead. I do that. If I have questions, I certainly ask.
I, I, I do as well, but sometimes, you know, it's, it's kind of out of my wheelhouse. I mean, I hate to admit it, but some of this stuff doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I don't know when some things are paid and what the schedule for payment on like, you know, workman's comp and our insurance and dental and things like that. Some of these things I, I'm just not aware of. I can't really answer the questions intelligently, but, but I just, I just wanted to just express to the rest of the council. It's just something I think we need to pay closer attention to as a, as a group of how we're spending our money.
Well, and coding is probably the biggest.
Yeah, and you know, and we all make mistakes when it comes to put it in, but, but every, everything that, all the questions that I had, all the questions that that this individual had, uh, y'all answered, and I thank you so much for getting on that right away.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Roll call. Hidsey.
Yeah.
Hee-Frey.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yeah.
Bill.
Yes.
Bradel.
Yes.
The number ten is municipal weekly garbage pickup, and this is consideration for the city administrator to meet with Baton and Town and Country garbage haulers or prepare an RFP. I would like to just read some stuff that is in our packet and then also make some of my own comments for council's consideration as we discuss this further. Because the council and community are aware of that we have been discussing the idea of weekly municipal garbage service at a number of council meetings since October. The idea was listed as a priority in the comprehensive plan, which has been about a two and a half year process. This plan and the priorities in which it were the result of many meetings, a community survey, many executive committee meetings, and several community workshop work sessions as well. Uh, was input from our community members at these meetings and via these surveys. This plan is on the agenda for consideration also later this eve, this evening, and the final approval for this plan later tonight. Weekly garbage pickup was also listed as a top number two priority for the two thousand and twenty-five, for two thousand and twenty-five in our council and staff strategic planning session. I have picked up, I'm sorry. I have met, or Lisa's met numerous times with the owners of Baton and Town and Country, and she's been explaining the different options that the council has. After the last few meetings, the city council input, while not formally voted on, has been that there is a consensus to try and work with the two haulers instead of doing a strict RFP and get the best price. We currently have four haulers with four trucks going down every street every week. These trucks are over the weight limit, and that is putting a toll on our streets. The council seems willing to look at paying more to go for a local hauler. This means that we would be supportive of one local Red Oak hauler and the other that does the, the second most business in Red Oak and is in the area. I'm going to say regional. I would consider Baton local, the rest regional. Uh, we have a countywide, county one as well. The council's, um, sorry. Lisa's plan after the holidays were for us, for her to get back together and spend about a month in January, meeting with the two owners, to come up with the plan to present to the city council for consideration in early February. The types of things that she had planned to discuss were, can they each handle serving approximately twelve hundred customers? Or does Baton want more than half of the true local hauler? What price are the customers, I'm sorry, what price are you willing to lower your amount to in return for not going out for bid, since each are guaranteed this willing to? Gosh, why can't I read this? Since each are guaranteed this business with one check from the city and the city doing all the customer service calls and billing, which also means we would also be doing all the collections, as they are willing to contribute some percentage towards the cost of the carts. How would we divide up the city so that each get half of the town, and how would pickup days work? Can we find the cart vendor and get a timeline for ordering them, et cetera? As the council knows, Lisa has, um, has often done her background work like this to prepare information for the council to vote on. If we cannot come to terms with these haulers, she suggests that we think about the next steps. That is the reason that we're, we have had no formal vote because there really is nothing yet to vote on. Eventually, if we're unable to bring forward a reasonable plan with these two haulers, the council would vote that they can agree to the price we receive and the other types of items listed above. If the vote for the plan was favorable, then she would take the next steps. Next steps would be drafting an actual contract between the city and the haulers, drafting an ordinance that would require mandatory service and it being placed on the water bill, contacting vendors for the, for the ordering of the carts, establishing a timeline. All of those final votes, such as the contract and ordinance change, would likely be in March. While we wouldn't know for sure until we're further along, she would anticipate. While we wouldn't know for sure until we're further along, she would anticipate a summer start date um for actual service taking place. And I think we thought that July one being fiscal year, start of fiscal year would be a good target. The issue and reason for placing this on the city council agenda is that her goals of meeting with the two haulers identified by the city council were stopped due to their unwillingness. Uh to meet with her because she they felt that we needed to take a vote on this topic. Where you've clearly have identified that you're giving her permission. To do the research, come to the agreement with the terms, present those to the council. Instead of giving her the time um. To meet when asked, she was told that she didn't have the direction from the city council to meet with them. She was told that we needed to do something different other than the priorities of the city council. I recognize the change, she recognizes that change is not easy. And has has explained to the other owners that the city council has the right as elected officials and our policymakers to guide this process and lead the city. She has asked the two haulers to please take the approach that while they may want to stay the same, that is that it might not likely be so. And so it would be helpful for their approach to be, we like serving Red Oak and want to continue to do so. How can we help be a part of the future of garbage in the community? She would like input from the city council today on our next steps. She would recommend that if the city council is serious about contracting with these two haulers and giving a huge concession by not bidding it out to get the best price. That they be given a deadline to meet and get terms worked out with her to recommend to the council. Each time she tries to meet and starts talking specifics, she gets asked to slow down and to wait. She has stated that we are not rushing anything, but we want to work on the details. If we are just stopping the stop, that's not progress. If we not meet a deadline set for those haulers, then the council can look to other paths such as an RFP. When we discussed this in December, she stated that no other haulers had contacted her looking to do business in Red Oak. That was a true statement at that time. However, since then, she has been contacted by another hauler. That provides weekly municipal service in a community in the area. She explained to them that we were likely only going to work with the two that do the most business in Red Oak currently. The person still wants to meet with Lisa. She again would recommend a vote of the council that in direction. That giving direction to her to get the terms worked out for the council's consideration in February. If that does not happen, we can then discuss what we will do next. So I guess like one of my first points um is that again, I I consider Baton the the local hauler because they are a. Local in Red Oak owned business that does pay taxes here. Town and Country is a business owned and operated out of Cass County and Griswold. They do not pay taxes here. The only other haulers who we do have uh that we have not spoken to that do business for Montgomery County and pay taxes in Montgomery County is Poor Boys out of Valisca. The city council's uh sets policy. And we are discussing with vendors to provide a service to the city. That most all other communities have agreements like this. This is not unusual. What is unusual is having four haulers that people can select to choose to have trash or not. And putting unnecessary uh usage on our streets as said earlier. Number three, the city should have um have had an agreement with a hauler, in my opinion, a long time ago, especially with the local hauler. I don't I don't personally understand why that's not happened. Um and we are offering to help these businesses grow. We've been talking about the same thing since before I was elected mayor, before any of this council were sitting here. So it's my understanding this is the fourth or fifth time this has come up in the last few last ten or so years. So it is in my opinion that we will make a decision one way or another. Um. Our conversations began in October. I know that Lisa has met with them two or three times in November. And we're just waiting now to put the terms together to present to the council. And council did in fact give Lisa permission to do her job, which is exactly what she's been trying to do. Um. I personally feel like we've been being stalled. And now um by refusing to meet with Lisa, we're just trying to hold this up. So my uh request to the council is that you consider setting a timeline, a deadline for when we would like to see these this meeting happen. My personal opinion is I think a month is plenty of time to get together, make any edits, adjustments. And to see an actual terms and agreements by the first uh meeting in March. So that we could then take any action and move forward on ordinance so that it would be in place by the end of April. That would be my recommendation to the council. Is anyone else on the council?
Garbage comes up every four or five years when we look at garbage and trash. Forty years we haven't solved it. I don't think we're gonna solve it right now. You've got a system right now that's working.
But is it?
Who who's picking up your garbage? Who's picking up my garbage? We've got a lot of people in town. That this. That flat as flat told me. They're gonna have a connection fit. If someone other than who they want to pick it up picks it up.
How many people have you talked to, John?
Yeah.
Probably about thirty so far. And I didn't have to reach out to them. I mean, they've been been beating my ears up. We've got two haulers right now that are doing majority of the business. They're doing a good job. I don't think we should make them suffer. Because we want to put our names on something that's different.
So you're saying that thirty people have approached you with negative comments about it?
Damn near every one of them.
Thirty out of two thousand. You have like roughly two thousand people.
Well, I have talked to the other twenty five hundred, but. I'm sure if I did, I'd buy the majority of them that's not in favor of it. I mean, one of the favorite comments they tell me is. They don't want to have to pay have somebody else's garbage picked up. They don't pay it. I don't know how they got this idea or how it's gonna work, but.
So one thing.
We're dancing around this can of worms. This damn quick gonna become stink made.
So I would agree, there's been a long time that this has been a discussion. I think it's time to to end the discussion and take some action on it. Uh you know, I've talked to, so far I've kept a total of it, I've talked to a total of. Eleven people now, including the people that have talked here tonight. And uh all eleven of those have been negative. Out of those eleven people, four of them don't live in my ward, so five people out of the two thousand that live in my ward are against it. As far as I'm concerned, I've heard nothing else from anyone else. They're either in agreement or they don't care. So I mean, you know, the the smallest majority of people make the most noise, John.
We we are excrised and the people that have talked to me, they just want their they don't, they want a certain provider.
I'm sorry?
They want a certain provider. They either want a bad or they want Town Country to pick up their trash. Because that's who they're they're happy with doing business with. They don't have a problem with having the mandatory trash service. They just want that provider to pick up their trash service.
The problem with that is, you know, wear and tear on our roads. Especially when only we have one hauler who pays road taxes here.
Yeah. And how and the 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 tricky part is. How do you weave it so that you have them getting their trash picked up by them?
You don't you don't weave it. You just you just make the decision and then it just happens.
That's where you have to go forward.
Yeah, some you have to, sometimes you have to swallow the hard pill.
The way people move in and out on a daily basis. It's just not feasible.
I've talked to probably twenty people. And a lot of them older people like me. But a lot of them say, well, I don't have that much garbage. And how can I have a big garbage when I can't even get it into the driveway or out of the driveway? I said, well, there are details to work out. We could possibly have three sizes of garbage pickups like a lot of cities do. Small, medium, and large for older people. Um some other people said, well. I have them pick up at my house instead of because and you know, that's great for individuals. And it's great that our local haulers do that, but not every town does that and have the. Have that availability to do that, so. It's about half and half for me. The people I've I what I think we need to do is work out the details with Baton and Town and Country. See where that leads us and see what works best for the community because there's so many things that we have to think about. The safety of our community. What we talked about in the comprehensive plan is the cleanup. And and there are so many other things and the hazardous waste too that we have to think about in this town. And I've seen trucks, like somebody mentioned, that their trucks are piled high with garbage. Maybe they take them to the landfill once a year, but maybe we can prevent that. By buying mandatory, so I'm torn. I need details also. For the people to answer, for me to answer to them. And I think as a city council, we get need to give. Um. Lisa direction to. Go to the two haulers that we have indicated and give work out the details so we can present those to the city council and vote on it. Because there's a lot up in the air for this and I don't think that we can. Decide without knowing all the details because I can't answer a lot of questions.
So I heard a comment here and I think uh Jen Horner's still here? Yeah, so Jen made a a comment about uh Fort Dodge has some kind of. Humble has some kind of a progressive trash service. I've never heard of that before. It's very interesting. I'm one of those people that put out one little bag of trash once every two weeks sometimes, so. Uh I I think that would be worth looking into. I don't know what that it seems like that would be a management nightmare from a hauler's perspective, but I don't know.
Well, I think there are all kinds of programs out there. I think that's why we have to.
Yeah, I think we need more information for sure.
Best for our community. So I would I would make the motion that we give Lisa the direction to talk to the local haulers is that's what they want. And to work out the details and then be presented as um the pros and cons.
Didn't leave anything there?
I've actually talked to people I've talked to, I've heard more positive than negative, honestly.
Yeah, you say half and half, but you're talking about other twenty people you've heard from.
I'm talking about a lot of older people too. That. Sometimes people don't want change, but change is for the better for the community sometimes, so. That's all I'm saying. I have to be honest.
So I'll just I'll just throw this out there in in addition to what I've also also said. I this is the only community I have ever lived in that did not have municipal trash service. I don't I don't know why it's such a big deal.
That's. To me, that is what city government is to do is to provide city services to our residents at a cost more affordable. So. So who has?
I made the question.
I'll second.
What what is?
Her motion is to.
I'll second. Direction to Lisa to.
And so what is that direction so that it can go in the minutes?
Yeah.
What is that direction?
That direction is to provide, work with the two haulers in town to provide details on how we will work out. The mandatory garbage pickup for the community of Red.
Can we call it municipal?
Yeah, municipal is a better name, I think.
Because we're gonna take over the billing and we're gonna take over all that.
And the other thing that people may not be uh aware of is. What we're asking is that the price would not increase. But that is a part of that price because we're not putting it out for the best price. Is that we will do a spring and fall cleanup as well, which would accommodate all of the other things that are out in a lot of people's yards. One thing that I think would also be helpful is for you all to talk to our police chief and our police officers. Were going in these properties, myself included. That I am overwhelmed by the amount of people that live with trash in their in their whole front porch. Just and their garages, it's just trash everywhere. I have uh one in January of last year, I went in three or four different homes. That was after Toys for Tots. I just can't believe how people live.
Again, we're trying to make progress.
That's right.
I think the citywide cleanup, we haven't had it for years because of the cost. And I think that if we have that citywide twice a year, I think that'll.
That will help.
A lot of it.
And that would be a part of this.
Yeah.
So and the fact that we would be billing, we would be billing. Send a check to these haulers, so it simplifies the process.
I'm gonna be I'm gonna be unavailable at the motions.
All right, so I got a motion in a second. I need to take a roll call. Did someone second it?
I saw you.
Brian, did you want me to talk a little bit? Please do, please do. Yeah.
Just to address a few things that people have talked about. Um and some of this is just. Um conversations online, but I continue to hear that we're gonna bring in a large hauler. I've seen people say that in every city I've worked in, I brought in a large hauler. I can assure you that in every city I worked in, there was only one city that we provided municipal service. And then we bid it out and it did go to a local hauler that was in that area and they were a national company. But there were no local haulers in that area. That was up in Wisconsin. When I went to the Quad Cities Republic Services, which does not do business around here, was in all of those cities before I came there. Because again, there were no small haulers there in those communities. And so for the rumors that are out there that my goal is to bring in. A large hauler, I don't care who provides the service. If the council's looking to have the service provided, that's what we're trying, that's what I am pushing for. And that the council had prioritized that while we find it challenging at an administrative level to give you the choice to pick your hauler. Because of how that would work on the actual, like you can say you want that, but then we have to, which is part of the detail that we talked to the council about. Is that having that at an administrative level on how we're going to administer, who goes to which house if it was Baton. Or T and C going to each house, that is challenging. I'm not saying it's impossible, but the council would have to say that we want to spend a lot more time administratively doing that. Or do we want to say that half of the town gets one and half of the town gets the other? There's that side of it. Um. And so why this is on the agenda tonight, and if you look at anything that I bring forward as a city administrator along with department heads. We do not typically come here when we have fifty full-time employees saying like, hey, is it okay if we work on something? Oftentimes, we get direction. We may have a department head that says, hey, as an example. Uh we brought forward a software program that costs about twenty five thousand dollars for the police department and the fire department. We don't come here first and say, is it okay that we call that software company and ask permission from the council? To be able to meet with them, get a proposal and come before the council. So we are not trying to skirt the public. We are not trying to not follow rules. We're just doing things the way we do as a full-service fifty employee, fifty full-time employees who they pay. They're very part-time and so. Kevin, you had the idea that you want to sit here with the council. If the council wants to sit here and hash that out, they certainly can. A lot easier for my day. But the reason that I think that we're saying that it would be the way that I'm suggesting it is because that's why you have employees. That work on behalf of the council saying, for the most part, I understand what you want to look at. As an administrator who's done this before, I know what kinds of questions we have to answer. And so the mayor sort of read what I said. It doesn't mean, and I think Kevin, you addressed to me that you didn't want to meet because the council hadn't voted. And what I was saying was that there's nothing to vote on yet. So the comment was they need to vote to put it on the utility bill. But they're not gonna vote to put something on the utility bill if we don't have a hauler, if we don't have a price. And that you would never change the city code to reflect putting it on a bill when let's just say we couldn't come to terms with them. And let's say because of all the scuttlebutt, we go out for an RFP and nobody put a bid out. So we literally get defunct because we can't do it because there's no one willing to do it. There'd be no reason that we would change the quote. So we're trying to go in the order of operations that we normally would go in with a full-time staff assisting the council in making policies. Again, I don't think it's just this group of people. Um if you look in the comp plan, it was two things. If you look at the strategic plan, it was also two things. So I wanted to address that. Um we've talked about the fact that the large pickups, you know, that there are a lot of things that are. Not the kinds of things that you put in bags or that you put in these carts that you would put in at the curb. In the next week or not next week, in the next couple of meetings, I do plan because I think it would be wise for the council to consider. And in our strategic plan on top of weekly garbage, we did talk about investing in some sort of a drop-off. Where maybe it's even free that the council says come this spring. I don't think we want to do it in the middle of winter when it's crazy cold. But we could plan with local haulers to provide dumpsters, say downtown where the recycling center area is. Something like that where we open up for maybe one weekday and one weekend day and let everybody bring whatever they want and that we end up paying for it. To try and clean that stuff up before we would start the curbside. That's separate and that was one of the top two things also in the. Cleanup our town, it was weekly trash and having those kinds of pickups. And if we did that ahead of the weekly service. Then what most communities that have the weekly mandatory municipal services has is what they call spring and fall cleanup. So all those kinds of things that you correctly cannot fit in your garbage minus. Uh construction, minus hazardous materials like batteries, tires, things like that can't go to the curb. Uh but most communities will have a set Saturday in spring and a set Saturday in fall. The haulers come through town. And that gives you an opportunity as a part of the fee that you pay, which is why when we're talking to the two companies to say, I'm gonna make up numbers. Not making this number up. Most people in town pay twenty six dollars. If we take over all the billing, our hope is that the two of them will decrease the price that we pay them. I'm gonna make up this number to say twenty one, twenty two, twenty three dollars. And if the city approves keeping it at twenty six. And if the city approves keeping it at twenty-six, the difference to go back up to twenty-six, even though we would only pay them that lower amount that we're trying to get from them. Is we could help pay for the weekly cert, the two spring and fall cleanups. And then we could also help pay for our administrative costs to bill it out on the water bill, because that would go. Um, against what they're currently spending on their cost of doing business. And again, there's no administrative cost for them any longer. Their job for us would be to pick up the garbage. And that we would communicate with them directly. People would call us. They wouldn't have to call at, at Batten or TNC for Red Oak customers. Um, a couple of things about, I know that the state has deemed that you cannot treat senior citizens differently. Unless they provide a different service. And so the idea of like the three different carts, sizes. Um, can work in a community. The downside that the council would have to look at is the fact that you then have to stock three different sizes. And you have to invest in, instead of if we need twenty-four hundred carts and we wanna have a hundred on hand. Do we then have to say, do people sign up for theirs beforehand? So we know how many do we order of each kind? And then how many do we have on hand for each kind? The administrative side of it also is that usually when you have the same size. If you move out, you leave your cart there, and then your next person comes along and gets the cart. If you constantly have to pick between size A, B, and C. Then there's gonna be a lot more administration, either by the hauler as a part of the contract or by city staff to be able to say. Well, now we left a large cart. And new owner of a property wants a little cart, so there's a lot of administrative going back and forth as opposed to the overall cost of keeping it the same. There is the disadvantage to those. Um, and it's not just about older people. I barely put a bag out every two weeks, cause I spend most of my time with city hall, and I have a lot of garbage at home. And so it can be single people that are young, it can be older people. Um, and things like that. But that would be something that the council would have, uh, again, pros and cons to say. Do we wanna invest in the cost of three different sizes? And as maybe one runs out, we still could have other ones in stock. And so just, that was kind of the reasoning why I was trying to meet with the two haulers. And so, um. You know, the more that we talk about this, it becomes a lot more pressure. And I was genuine saying that nobody had ever reached out to us. Uh, before that. And so in the last couple of weeks, we did have a hauler from our area reach out. I explained to them exactly what the mayor's side, which was that we want to work with our two, what we'll call number one haulers, that they do the most business in town. And when I said, um, that that's the direction that the council is looking at going, they said it'd still like to meet with you, because people are eager. And so there is. I think I saw a comment about why should the haulers have to help pay for the carts? When you do go with a bigger hauler, those are provided as a part of the cost. I've never seen a city pay for the carts. When they have normal one hauler on the garbage bills or on the water bills. And so. I think that was the council's willingness to say that we wanna take city money and try to buy down the cost to both TNC and Batten and be able to say. To have skin in the game, to say that in return for not paying less as a community to these two haulers, that there would be a cost share. In return for having a number of years of a contract. And so making up numbers, what I threw out there was that, let's say. It's not necessarily gonna be a hundred thousand, it'll probably be more than that. But if we were gonna pay a hundred thousand for the carts. That maybe Batten kicks in twenty thousand, TNC would kick in twenty thousand, and that the city council would authorize sixty thousand, so like a sixty, twenty, twenty split. Again, while that may not seem fair to them, what we do know is that the haulers around us that are from other communities are not paying anywhere. They're not charging anywhere near twenty-six dollars. So the council has to weigh. Um, what we pay as a community, and they have to decide that obviously, but then eventually charge it out. Versus that. And that's what I think for those that keep saying, we're gonna go, and we're gonna put these guys out of business, we're not meeting with them, we need to meet. We at least need to be able to talk. And I, and again, if you go to my packet. I tried to spell out that it's not all gonna be decided on in the next month, if that's the time that we. Uh, the three of us would meet. It would be some basic things, like can we get a price? Can we agree how we're gonna do this on the basic level? Bring it back to the council to say. Can you live with these prices? Is it at least the twenty-six? Nobody really wants to say that because we want to municipal trash. That it's gonna cost more than it is currently. And then be able to say at that point, there's no point in me going to like the attorney, having contracts drafted up if you don't feel like you can as a council live with. What that looks like. So we'd sort of have a couple of phases. So now we're saying, if this votes favorably tonight, we're gonna talk. Then we would come back after the three of us have sat down. If they choose to sit down with us. If they don't, then we'll go to the next step. If they do, we'd bring back, you know, uh, ten bullet points of. This seems to make sense. Let's carry on with these two haulers as opposed to going out for an RFP. And so. Um, you know, and I've had people call me too. Certainly the people that are most vocal, I would say all of you are correct that, um, or. I guess a few of you didn't say that it was more towards negative comments, but I think again, when you have an issue like this. More people that are against it will be more vocal. But there have also been people that quietly don't wanna come here and be. Um, you know, kind of in the, just like down the aisle with politics and who did you vote for, what position you have. People that are in favor of it tend to be more quiet. Um, I've had past elected officials come and see me and say. That to some degree, they're embarrassed because they allowed this not to happen in the past, and make sure you get it done this time. Because you have a different council, you have different administration, and that they know, even though they maybe in that one, two, or three, four times ago that they didn't pass it. That it would have been the right thing for them to do. And that's coming from them again, not showing up here, not saying that. They wanna, you know, kind of have these adversarial relationships. Everybody does wanna get along, and nobody's trying to be adversarial, but. We hope that what we can do is come up with something that people can live with, and that perhaps in a year or two, that it will become commonplace like it is in. So many other places, and that it's not a negative thing. At the end of the day, the hope is that it would cost less. Um, but we're at least trying to make it not cost more, because recognizing that as small haulers. Um, that they. That there's a cost to them that is perhaps larger than it is to a bigger company that has a higher, um, economy of scale.
Who's paying the landfill?
Well, in any contract that I've ever seen, it's part of your fees that you would charge us and you would pay the landfill.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to let you know. Pays landfill, and I've heard it was twelve dollars for their garbage service down there. Well, that's, cause the landfill is put on there separately. So.
Right. But again, unless we talk. You know, like, nobody's.
I just wanna, I wanna stop that rumor right now.
Right. But there's a lot of rumors out there. Like, I, I don't know, I had a guy in, in the lobby that five times said, you're gonna put these guys out of business. And at the very first time that he said it, I specifically said, we wanna meet with these two. And I finally said. You're not hearing me, because I literally said the council wants to work with these two. And then he finally, after I said it that clearly, like, I feel like you're not listening to me. Then maybe he walked away understanding that our goal is not to put you out of business, Lynette, or you, Kevin. I don't know that you will or won't be, but. That's what we said, is if the council does choose this policy, we either have to meet, and when I ask you to meet, I just, I wanna know that we can meet.
I, I told you I have a timeframe.
I understand. I understand, but the unfortunate part is that we've been talking since November. And so. I don't think the council is gonna be unreasonable, but. Every time I've said like, hey, can you give me vendors for where we could get these carts? Can you talk about? Your prices, like, we don't, we don't get anywhere. And so I think that was the reason why we need clear direction, because. I feel like we just have this. Uh, uncomfortableness to sit down and talk. Because maybe people think that we're not gonna do this, and the council is saying at least. Based on the things that have happened in the past, we need to have a proposal to bring before them, and that they're not gonna vote on a proposal. Unless they have a proposal. So for that, that was my reason to listen to you two, that you needed to hear from the council, we would need to meet. And so I think that's. Probably a good place to wrap up.
And again, we're, we are going to vendors, asking them to meet the needs of what the city's policy, what we want for the best for the community. So. I don't know. Um, the advantage to an RFP is you tell them what you want, and those who respond, respond with what it is that we're seeking. So I feel like we're, we're trying to do the right thing, trying to stay local. But at some point. I say we open this up to an RFP if they're not willing to meet us halfway. So what is a deadline of when you'd like to see that? I mean, a deadline of, of getting a provo, something in front of you.
Already got a motion in seconds.
Okay.
Ready to go.
All right.
After you like a dog chasing his tail, because. One, we're not even sure what we're gonna do. We're not sure what it's gonna cost. We're not sure that the people are gonna be satisfied with what they get. And you know, good and well. Those people are gonna be headed if you shove something down their throat that they don't want.
So John, that's what we're voting on right now. It's what we're gonna talk about. We're gonna vote on, excuse me, I'm talking. We're gonna, we're voting on. Directing Lisa to get these details, to make all these decisions, to bring it to us so we can vote on it. That's all we're voting on.
You're not voting on the details and you're not voting to have curbside service. You're voting on, because I couldn't meet with them. They said no, because the council hadn't voted. So all you're saying is, Lisa, the direction is clear to our two companies. Please meet and bring us back with facts. That's all you're voting on tonight. No details. That's the goal of the next vote. To have some sort of details in front of you. But I couldn't, my goal was that that was what was happening in January, and I couldn't get there because I said, can we meet? And they said no.
And you've got a motion in second.
Hmm, but I don't have a timeline. So I've got a motion, a second, Bradley and Bills, unless someone wants to make any other amendments.
Of when?
There's no timeline in the motion, is what she's.
Roll call. Hatebrink?
Yes, yeah.
No timeline.
Bradley, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Freidol?
Yes.
Isaac?
Wouldn't abstain, cause I just don't understand it.
As soon as possible, Lynette. Soon as possible.
Like I say, I have a procedure that I have to do.
And so do we.
Instead of, I'll be out from the twenty-third to the twenty-eighth.
I'm sure Lisa will accommodate you the best, again.
Can that abstain?
But we move on, right?
He can choose. You shouldn't abstain unless you have a conflict, John. So if you have a question before you abstain. The only thing that you're voting on is shall I meet with them? That's it.
Then no.
So you're saying she shall not meet with the two haulers to figure this out?
Like I told you, I was confused, and I, I'm not gonna vote yes on it. That's all we're just doing.
All right.
Four to one, four to one.
Number eleven, ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-five dash one. This is the city council payroll going to quarterly. This is the second of three readings. As opposed to monthly. Because. It is. More economical to do that.
This will be the second.
Sorry, I'm for the second reading.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
And Hatebrink? Roll call. Bradley?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Freidol?
Yes.
Isaac?
No.
Hatebrink?
Yes.
Um, number twelve is resolution twenty-two-five dash three, approval of the twenty-two-five comprehensive plan. I would like to make one suggestion, that we add an acknowledgement page that identifies all of the steering committee and, and committee members. That have been involved in it. That'd be my only recommendation. Otherwise, I think it looks good.
So you'll recall that this has been going on for two years, that there have been lots of public meetings, surveys. This is. A required document for a lot of different reasons. I think that ours was, was it fifteen years old?
Twenty.
Twenty. It's twenty-five now.
So. We held the planning and zoning public hearing, then it was. Recommended by the planning and zoning commission to the council. In December, we held the public hearing. For the council, and then we held off because we wanted to kind of go over our strategic plan. We're waiting for the marketing person to kind of put together our goals that we came up with, our. Pillars of progress, which had our top eight things that the group voted on in our strategic planning day. But that doesn't change anything in the comp plan. So if the council wants to make. A motion to approve it, and then if you do wanna indicate that having some appendix in the back that lists the steering committee, just to give acknowledgement to those that worked on it. We can certainly do that before we publish it.
I'm to approve with that.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll second. But I, I do wanna make a comment. I got, I got a phone call today from, uh, a citizen that. Wanted to make some comments and some input to the comprehensive plan. I did not get his comments because my computer will not accept any, I can't log on to my computer unless I'm here or City Hall. I need to get that fixed. Uh, I would have liked to address his concerns with our plan, but it's too late at this point.
I have to say that we had public meetings.
No, and, and I, I did, I did, I did let him know this been going for two years. And I let him know that, you know, you know, and he's not in my ward, but I, you know, I took his.
But you got the same call.
Concerns.
No, I did not get a call.
But anyway, I just.
I got an email.
I got the email also.
Yes.
But anyway, I just, I hated to see that there's still people.
He's also, that particular person's also been in a, a meeting, so if he had questions, he could.
Well, that's my comment as well, Brian. I understand you're, you, you feel bad that you couldn't accommodate that.
I just feel really bad that I couldn't address his questions, uh, before now, because my computer won't allow me to log on to it anywhere except for City Hall.
There's been two years of meetings for people to voice their opinion about the plan. So, so, yep. And it's a living document anyway, so as we see fit as we need to, we could update that plan. Just need to get it approved and move forward.
Yep, I don't wanna inject anything in it. I just wanted just to make that comment. That's all.
And I think Danielle said when she was here during the public hearing that kind of an annual update or some sort of annual addendum is always.
Certainly more than over twenty, twenty years.
Well, I, a lot of people don't understand that the comprehensive plan is so important, because. When we go out to apply for grants and monies from the federal level or state level, we have to have a comprehensive plan in place in order to do that.
Well, and it just shows pre-planning and forward thinking. Yes. Okay, so I have a, a motion by Freidol, second by Bills. Any further discussion?
Yeah, and one person called me and, and he sent me an email. But he felt there's a lot of redundancy in it that didn't need to be in there. And some of the stuff he didn't think was explained clear enough to make it. Black and white document.
I got the same email, John. And like I said, I wish I would have had time to address his concern, but I don't. Cause I couldn't, I, I didn't get them.
Roll call.
Well, his email was about seven, eight pages long.
Roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Freidol?
Yes.
Isaac?
I suppose.
Hatebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number thirteen is resolution twenty-two-five dash zero four. This is the approval of a city auditor agreement for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, we did get two RF, or two requests, um, or, or proposals back, one from the state of Iowa. Who has done ours for many years, and then one from Bergen KDV. Uh, the proposal is in your packet. Hopefully you've all looked at it. Uh, Lisa's recommendation is that we would look at Bergen KD, KDV. Their price is better, and also I think we get more. Um, and definitely the timeliness will be there, um, along with year-round council as well as long-term financial.
Any downside to going with a private company over the state?
I reviewed the both audits, um, proposals. And I think that the one that you're proposing is, um, probably better for us, because it's more relevant and we can do a faster audit. Rather than with the state, and it's also comes in as a low price. And plus, we get the support that we need for. What, what we don't know and how to go around, uh, or adapt to what they tell us to do. So I think that's important.
We're still waiting on fiscal year twenty-three from the state.
And I think we need to know right away, if there are mistakes made that we need to correct them.
Correct. Yep.
So this will speed all that up?
Yes, definitely.
So their plan is, uh, if the state comes, they won't come until April. Um. Bergen KDV will come in February this year, because of course we're past, and then they will always come in the fall. That's what they do with their other clients. They come in the fall to make sure that they have it done before the end of the calendar year. The state law says that we have to have our, it's interesting, because the state's doing our audit, and the state law says you have to have your audit done by March. And they don't even come until April. So it's. Uh, interesting that the auditor's office at the state, uh, does not really comply with their own rules. Uh, it's just super ineffective. I think that there's always been a perception, at least here in Red Oak, that you've stayed with the state because they're cheaper. You can see that they're not always cheaper. Uh, when I spoke to them. We are what they called one of our more complicated cities, and what they mean by that is simply we have a lot of full-time services. And that typically they are doing much smaller communities.
And I also have to say with the new software program that we're proposing, that it will eliminate some of the, uh, detail auditing that we will probably have had in the past. And won't have in the future.
Correct. Okay.
One of the things, uh. One of the things um that I feel like we at least need to acknowledge here is that there's a lot of things that are not correct in our accounting system right now. And I don't, I don't mean to say that things were improper, like illegal, but we have accepted that things have been off balance for a long time. And I am not an accountant, nor do I pretend to be one. And so we, as we talk about, and we're not going to vote on the software, but we're going to have new auditors, and then we are forced to have new software, even though we probably should have had it a long time ago. And I may need to come back to the council to say that I've got a couple people that I think could help. Um, just from our standpoint, there's not enough time in the day for us to actually sit there and try to figure out, but junk in is, you know, junk out is junk in. And so as we transition to this new software, my fear is that if we don't figure out where our starting point is to be acknowledging that we're balanced from the bank statements to our software system, and then we try to transfer it all to this new system, like it's just a forever chaos that we, we don't balance correctly.
So we have identified our discrepancies at this point, correct? I mean, we hired an independent lady to come take care of.
That wasn't for that. That was to help us get through the annual financial report to get our state reports.
But she may be able to help us with this.
I see. Would that be the same service again?
There's Beth, and then there is also, but she's still a full-time city administrator. Um, I also have a colleague, Ken, Cindy Kendall. She's a retired city clerk from Marshalltown, a certified clerk, and does a lot of training at IMF O A. Um, and we met with her today because when we do everything in G works, like nothing's in an Excel spreadsheet, and so Ashley and I sat with her. Um, I asked her to consider, just because she's retired, if she would, she's getting ready to retire, and so we're not delaying her retirement, but she is super great at being able to look at things. Like, it's a possibility that it's how the CDs are booked into the bank accounts, but it's somewhere people have just accepted that we're off balance, and it just doesn't feel right.
How much time are you talking about?
I have no idea. Because I'm being told that this could have been going on for a decade.
No, no, I'm talking about to bring this person in to.
I have no idea, because I don't know how far back it has to go. And then what I want to be able to do when the auditors get here, because if we switch to the new software, it's likely mid to late summer. The auditors will be here in February, and then with a fresh set of eyes, they'll be able to say, all right, what does this look like to you guys? Have we just sort of muddled along and the state's kind of been okay with it? Um, and I also want to talk to the state to help get a better handle on what's been off, but it seems like it's been off for a very long time. And I don't know if it's an acceptable practice, because I've never worked anywhere where it's been off like this. Um, to be able to say that you go back so many years and that you accept this is where you're off, and then you start there. And then everything from there, you know that you're balancing, because we have to, like, it's, it's the software and the bank that do not jive. And part of it is, most cities don't have CDs anymore. And then you have two different banks in your software system. So you have your CD bank, and then you have your regular bank, and so um, that is not something that I normally do. So I think we should wait until the auditors get here and kind of ask them what they think, along with if we go with this new software at the next meeting. But I just want to acknowledge that while we got a better price here, um, and I think a fresh set of eyes will be helpful, but I also think um, we can't go from one system to the next system and bring unbalanced numbers. I don't know what else to.
How much off are you talking about?
Literally heard the, the number.
Might never be balanced.
Yes. I've heard that we've never been balanced for a long time, and literally people talk about a million dollars. But again, it doesn't mean that there's a million dollars missing. I want to be very clear on that. We have a million dollars in CDs, and if they're not booked properly to the right bank, and I don't, I'm not going to judge people that were here before. I don't know if people had the appropriate accounting skill set that they didn't know how to book it right, and then we have this antiquated software that nobody updated.
We have discrepancies even remotely close to that. We need to hire somebody to get this figured out.
Right. Yeah, this is not two hundred dollars. This is, and again, it just could be something old.
Few months back, we were talking about, we didn't close out certain accounts that there were projects that were done, and that was money that was sitting there. Just sitting there, we had how many of them that we said that we did have closed out?
The money was missing, it just wasn't.
It's just not, not closed out or appropriated in the right accounts, not moved over, right? So.
Yeah, that was things that like, we didn't.
Money's probably sitting there, it's just not in the right.
Right. Like, as an example, when we ran a cash report, it said that in the employee benefits fund one twelve, which we have a separate tax for property taxes called employee benefits. So it's like we tax for health insurance, and you don't have to use that in the eight-ten. When we ran the cash report, it said there was thirty million dollars in there. There is not thirty million dollars. But something is not being booked properly, that people don't know what to do at the end. Because typically cities levy taxes and put it in, and then they typically transfer it out to the fund that's paying. So the general fund is police benefits, it's fire benefits. You typically just put your taxes in, and they balance by putting it into the general fund. Um, like, there's another one that's like super weird to me that I've just not seen before, which is typically you levy taxes for debt. And you're typically levying about what you owe, and then there's like seven hundred thousand dollars in there. So is there really seven hundred? Like, I think it's where it's booked and at year-end processes that are the thing, but like, I can't, I'm, I'm not going to tell you that I can figure that out myself, because I don't, I'm not a journal entry general ledger. That is not my skill set, so.
This company would come in. But that is something that can't be figured out, I'm hoping.
Yes, I think that it either has to be that, like, you can't go back ten years maybe, but you can say, like, because the likelihood for the new software is carrying forward three years. So that would be like the first goal, is to say, can you balance those three years, and then whatever you were off balance, you're just like counting it as zero. You don't really write it off, but you basically like balance it out, so that now, as you go forward, everybody's balancing every month, and because right now it's sort of a crutch to say, like, nobody really knows what we're off. And you should always balance at the end. So again, I don't, I do not want to be quoted saying that anyone was doing anything wrong. I simply think that it was either a lack of expertise. I think that if somebody was taking money, that would have come out. I don't think it's anything like that. I just think that something is off kilter in the software. You have super old software that unfortunately, in the past, people didn't want to invest in those upgrades or to look at that kind of stuff, and that's sometimes what happens. You know, we, for example, we can't do direct deposit for employees in the system because the system is sold. You know, we it, it's just the challenges. So I just want to acknowledge today's decision is the audit. Hopefully in February, the decision is software. And with those two things, I think we'll have a lot better information. And then I'm just acknowledging today that we may have to invest in someone who has the skill set to help us uh, be better about our accounting system.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it was, but it's since uh Tim and I have been on the council that we actually voted to continue with the software we're using, because it was just what they've been doing for so long.
Yeah, change is scary.
Because this is something that you can't just shut off. So like, you'll, you'll have to have the new one ready to go, almost operating instantaneously.
Usually do two months of both systems.
Yeah.
And this system is so old that it is literally going away at the end of the year.
Yes.
No choice. You either have to stay with G works and upgrade to the cloud, or you have to go with a new company. Um, at IMF O A, which is again, uh, finance officers for the state of Iowa, there was nearly a revolt um at those because so many people are frustrated with the G works technical support. And even the com, even the cities that have taken on the cloud have been super frustrated. Um, the one that we're recommending, I personally have been in two cities that used it, never had any issues. Um, while I didn't put it in the packet, some of my colleagues have been asking various cities that have recently made the transition from a different company over to Civic, and it's been a very positive experience. Um, I think I sent all of you a link if you wanted to watch it. It was an hour and forty-five minutes of a demo, just helping you understand um the incredible increase in technology that this would come with at a fairly similar price to what we're paying for right now. Um, most important really is tech support. And then we can talk about that when we get there, but it's just a lot more um advanced in the tools that we can.
Well, you know, you say change is scary, and it can be uncomfortable.
And it can be fabulous.
Just because it's the way we've done it for twenty years, doesn't mean we should keep doing it that way. And I feel that way about a lot of different things.
You have not.
So I will move to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five oh four with Bergen K D V.
Oh, five? Did I read it wrong?
Oh, four, before.
Did I say, I said twenty twenty-five oh?
Oh, the um resolution should be four. Yep.
I will approve that resolution.
With that.
It's actually five.
It is five?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just like to say that I was impressed with the number of cities that use this company for auditing in uh, all the Midwest, uh, as far as Minnesota, Iowa, and Nebraska cities that are comparable to our size. And then with great results. So I, I will second that motion.
Okay, so if I got Fredo and Bradley, I just want to point out that the cost savings is significant. It's, it's nearly five thousand dollars for going with this company over the state. So.
And I do, uh, we sent this out to probably fifteen different audit firms, you know, and sometimes we know is helpful. Um, I did use them in a past city, and so just having that relationship kind of helped them be willing to take a stab at working with us as opposed to, you know, a lot of firms that are booked.
Absolutely.
Um, and so I was glad to that. There's, uh, the lead person is not the same person that I had in uh, they came out of Minneapolis or Minnesota offices, but one of the workers will be the same. And so I can at least attest personally that they did a great job. They were kindly, they came to the council meetings and made a presentation to help answer any of your questions and, you know, be super transparent.
We've not had that in the time that we've been here.
And again, I just think that's not the way that the state model really is. It was just, they call themselves an auditor of last resort. I think it'll be a positive for the community.
I think so too, and I do think your relationship with them is worth noting. So, thank you. Uh, so I got a first Fredo, second Bradley, roll call. Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac? Hate brain?
Yes.
Bradley? All right. Number fourteen, discussion on software conversion to civic system from G works. Again, Lisa pointed out that our current system is absolutely archaic. Um, and that it will be obsolete by the end of this year, so up, we, we've got to make a decision. Last year, we tried to budget for this. And it was what got cut when we had to start narrowing down the budget. So, um, we're looking at right now, this will be about, um, we're currently paying seventeen thousand a year for the whole. It went up to thirty thousand, right? Thirty thousand per year for the old version that has no upgrades. And if anybody had to see what Suzie has to do in order to do auto pay, it literally takes a week. It's ridiculous.
So can you go over, um, Lisa, the modules that it does? That it has and what it provides.
So obviously, one of them is accounts payable. That's the claims list that you got every, you know, every meeting. Uh, one of the things that'll be great about it is right now, like, we get an invoice. Karen is the employee who handles that. She may have to pass it around to five different department heads to initial. And then it's all in a file, piece of paper, it's put in the basement in a big banker's box. Uh, going forward with this module, every invoice will be scanned in. And then it's routed, so every department head will be in the system, and you just click who you're going to route it to. So if it's something that Clint and Chris have to initial, if it's something that John and Justin have to initial, she'll have it in there. It'll say, go to these people. They get an email that says, please go into the system and approve it. They then have an electronic proof that they've approved it. They can review it. They can decline approval and say they have an additional question. They can say, oh, you thought it was mine, redirect it to somebody else. Um, and then they have, uh, which is super effective, what's called my viewpoint. So even though the department heads will not have the ability to touch anything and alter it, they do have viewing capabilities. So at any time, they would be able to go in and say, hey, last year, I can't remember the number, the name, the amount that we paid to a certain vendor. They can go in at any time and go into their account, click in the vendor, and they can actually see the invoice right in there. So the paper, volume of paper, the where department heads feel like they have to keep a copy of something to be effective in the way they manage. They can always see all that information. They can run reports. If they want to keep tabs on what it is that they have spent in their budgets within those account numbers, they have the ability to do that. So that's payables. Um, and then again, it would, it would be, you can set up any sort of auto pay, automatically paying, which we do have that right now. Um, but I just think it's a little bit more advanced system. You can also, like, if you ever look at bills, it might be five different account numbers uh, that we charge the auditors to, let's just say, if we pay them. Like, water, sewer, general fund, road use, so let's say it's four. You can pre-program the system to say, this vendor, these are the four account numbers. So again, instead of having to go through and enter and enter and enter and enter, there's ones that default all of those things on the backend of the system, while there's the time to set it up, will make it super efficient when it comes to entering them. There's a lot less room for key air, keying errors, things like that. So that's kind of payables. Um, cash receipting is what you would do at the two front counters. So whether you're at Donna's workstation, entering the utility billing, that's considered cash receipting. If somebody came in for a building permit, a pool pass uh, to pay for their rental inspections, any of those things, all of that is called cash receipting. Again, everybody has their unique login. It, um, lots of dropdown menus, abilities to like, it automatically goes. And again, a lot of that is less different than, like, actual seating is not that much different than what we have now. Um, but just a lot more capabilities and how it works. General ledger, kind of that same, like, what you talked about with, like, um, bank rec, they bank rec and general ledger in G works is two separate modules. Here, it's all together. Uh, one of the things that was important to me about going with Civic that I wanted to make sure is that my um use of them was in Wisconsin and Illinois. And Iowa is very unique in the kind of reporting that we have to do. So when we do this A F R, like, other cities in other states don't have to do that kind of reporting that we do. And so I wanted to make sure that they had enough cities under their belt in Iowa, which they now do. I don't know, I obviously didn't pay attention before. Um, but because I knew that it was different in other states, I wanted to make sure that they have enough of an Iowa presence that we're not disadvantaged uh by not having that. So the general ledger is basically everything that is all of our accounting, how all the payables get put into uh, the different accounts that you have allocated money for. Anytime that there's a receipt, that there's revenue, it automatically goes into the general ledger. That my viewpoint is a, uh, unlimited number of users, so that's all the department heads would have that. And then, um, with regard to payroll, this is probably the biggest upgrade. So right now, everything's in paper. So you handwrite your time card, your time sheet, not time card. I don't think anybody actually punches a time card. It's not very effective in the public sector. And then their department head has to get it. Um, the numbers in terms of like time off and benefits are all super antiquated. This way, every employee will have their own unique login. They will go in and enter their time. When they submit their time for the two-week period, it will automatically know who their supervisor is, and it will say, hey, Clint, your six employees have now entered their time. He then reviews it online. And then the most important thing, again, for no keying errors, is that every number that goes in, Suzie will be able to see it. But she will not have to enter it unless she finds an error. So even when you ask for a vacation day, it automatically, if your vacation day was approved, it dumps in your eight hours of vacation into there, so that there's less room for error. Um, you ask for your time off that way, your department head approves it that way, and then it dumps right into your time sheet. So it'll be like, hey, remember two weeks ago on Monday, you were off. Um, and then everything, the people are all set up for their different pay codes. So, um, if we, if we pay a lifeguard one thing per hour uh, to be a lifeguard, and then say we have a higher number for when they're doing swimming lessons. Right now, Suzie is saying you make twelve dollars an hour and you make twenty dollars an hour, and she's literally going in and changing it, entering your twenty dollars, and then has to go back and change it to twelve, and all of that is huge room for error. All of that would just be different pay codes, and you can just drop down and pick, this is your lifeguard, this is your swimming lessons. Uh, we obviously have a lot of unique pay and public safety with the different ways that we pay twenty-four, seven employees, things like that. So that'll be super helpful.
And across just different departments. So we've got some firefighters that are also.
So all of that, right. She's constantly having to change.
She has to change it constantly.
I was gonna say, it was hours and the staff.
Yeah, so.
And paid for too.
Uh-huh. So my time. So my time is the module that is what everybody would use as employees. Uh, the my viewpoint is the department heads. Then finally, utility billing. Um, we have the option. So as you know, there's always a security risk for if anybody ever got hacked through their firewall. Um, one of the things that we could choose to do in this system is instead of ever storing, like, right now, we have banking information in our system. So if we ever had a compromised situation, uh, people could get into our system and see banking. There is a module that uh, there would be. There is a module that, uh, there would be a charge to the citizen, um, per transaction. But you can do it so that all of the information about banking is stored in their world and not in our world, and a much higher safety. So some communities are starting to do that, that's something that we can look at. Um, and that's a per transaction thing, um, and then community portal. So the other thing that'll be great is right now, the only thing that you can pay online is your utility bill. When we go through this process and get everything on boarded, it can be, this is how much your building permits are, this is a dog license, a parking permit. Anything like that could be paid, and if there's a way to like have people email stuff and we get them stuff back. That there's a lot less, and you know, if you kind of think about how the whole world is, uh, most people aren't making you come in. Uh, and do a lot of things in person, and so it'll be a lot more user friendly, that's what that community portal is, is that it has access to everybody on the outside. Coming in to be able to make those payments.
Can you explain to me on that page seventy-eight, uh, bottom's just total cost, and you've got alternative pricing. Just explain those two lines to me, total cost and then alternative pricing, we know, what's the no license fee?
So basically, they're giving you two ways to pay, and this is the thing that we need to think about, and you can, you don't have to answer tonight, you have to think about. So right now, we are paying thirty thousand dollars a year. Because G-Works upped their fee, we were always paying about seventeen, I feel like it was a super poor business. Land, but they charged us thirty upfront, I could have seen if they said you're gonna pay seventeen. And if you convert over to the cloud June one, and you were only paying seventeen for the year, but now you have a half a year in the, in the cloud, then you would. Acknowledge with your seventeen in January that you were gonna get upcharged for going to the cloud, but this was just a thirty thousand, so. They're basically giving you, do you want to pay upfront something, and then pay less every year? Or do you want to pay nothing upfront, which is the licensing fee, and then pay more every year? So as I said, let's just be, let's just do the math here, so basically, let's look at it as five years. Because if you look at the difference between on the right-hand column, the nineteen and twenty-eight. Rounding that off to eight or nine, or nine thousand dollars. And then divide nine into the forty-seven, that's the dollar upfront, let's just call it five years, you guys are on page seventy-seven, not seventy-eight.
Is that what it is? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
So license fee, the forty-seven thousand, first column on the left, so you can pay upfront that dollar. And then going over to the column on the right. You can pay nineteen thousand dollars per year, which is almost like we were paying in G-Works for a hundred times better.
I get, okay, so you explain it to me now, so I, I totally get it now.
And so really, it's, so what I said to him is, the truth is, we don't have to stay with them for any amount of time, we're not gonna have a contract, so I said. If we don't stay with you for five years, which I don't know why we would switch and then not, and we haven't had, you know, nobody's saying that a bad experience, but. If we stayed less than five years and didn't pay upfront. They would get less money. Right, because we didn't give them any money upfront, and we only paid twenty-eight thousand, and so it takes them five years. To have us pay more to get to the forty-seven that we could have paid, and then for us, we pay forty-seven upfront. And we save nine thousand dollars, and it's a wash until we get to year five. Is, is like how I've tried to wrap it in my head.
Pay me now, pay me later.
Yes, but.
Do they, do they do upgrades automatically?
Everything, because it's on the cloud, it's just automatic, like you're never paying for upgrades, I asked them what their likely increases per year.
Companies do.
Yeah, I just didn't understand that, I was looking at this one figure and it kind of threw me off to eighty-two thousand.
Right.
So that scared me, but now I get it.
Yep, so the conversion is either way, the twenty-one thousand that we have to pay, because that's their time to get us in the new world. We have to train everybody, so that's the thirteen, so regardless of which plan you take, you're gonna pay twenty-one and thirteen. If you want to pay the upfront, the forty-seven, then this year we would pay eighty-two. If we don't pay the upfront, this year we would pay thirty-four, and then we would go for those, so my gut feeling. Although I don't really, some of my colleagues that are switching to them think to do the opposite, but because in our budget. We have the dollars that you borrowed, and you did not spend as much on some of the capital projects that you have, we do have money today. Upfront that we could pay it, and then that doesn't impact our budget as much every year as things go up and our ability to tax. So my gut feeling with our situation is that it might be better to pay the upfront money, because we have the cash in hand. That we have to decide what's gonna happen with the extra townhomes money that we do need to spend, you can't just keep it. You have to spend borrowed money in a certain amount of time, and I think we just have to do a simple resolution, I have to check with, um.
So there's no other annual fee?
No, this is it. So then we would take eighty-two of that money, which thirty-four of it we'd have to pay anyway, and then I think for going forward, knowing. All the other things that inflation brings with it, my gut feeling, now, if you were a city that didn't have that money right now. Then maybe you're better to not have to come up with that cash.
But the math isn't really that much different.
It's five years to one side or the other, and when you get to five years, it's the same.
Yeah, so it truly.
That's how I was like, okay, so what happens if someone left after two years, he's like, I guess people don't leave us, so we don't take that. We're, we're okay taking that chance.
Yeah, it really doesn't matter to us either way, we don't.
Right, as long as you're staying for five years, it doesn't matter, if you paid forty-seven and then failed after two years, you could have saved money. But again, I have no reason to believe based on my personal experience in other cities, based on people that we've talked to in Iowa that have gone through this conversion. That are happy with the technical support, um, there's a couple other companies out there that tend to be a little bit higher, and nobody's saying that there's a reason to. To not go, this is a, um, a company that does a lot of Midwest work, and so. So we're not getting, my plan was not to vote on it, but this, until two weeks, um, two more weeks. And then the reason to vote on it soon is that they're gonna put everybody on the list as you sign up, and there's about thirty cities. Looking at moving because G-Works throws the bomb on December thirty.
So it looks like we can't get a conversion till August, and he has that.
When I asked him, he said, um, I said ideally it'd be great to do the new year, and he said I don't know that we can get it done by July, but I think we could in August. But the sooner we say go.
The better.
Right, so I think it's still, you know, it's a good investment and think about it for the next couple of weeks, two weeks isn't gonna.
So we can put that agenda for the next meeting.
Correct, so my goal would be if the council's good with that.
Now, the training, does that include the staff and, and, uh, the supervisors? Can we be involved in that training too, is there anyone?
Yeah. Come on, watch the demo, let's.
I think all we would need to do is a, a resolution to, uh, show the difference in the, I think, of the.
Just have to do a resolution approving the contract. But I think it'd be a huge upgrade, um, like I said, we had, we closed City Hall last week for two hours, just so that we didn't have to. Answer phones and people not be able to watch it, so it was all of us in the office, we added Clint just because he'd be the department head that would be most impacted with billing. And when Taylor was there, we all watched it, so.
Good.
You know, everybody knowing what they do in G-Works right now, it's kind of like, wow. Pretty, pretty different.
Excellent.
In a positive way. So, if you think of any questions over the next couple of weeks, let me know, otherwise, well. Barring any objection, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So would that resolution include us using that money differently?
I will ask, if that's what we think is a possibility, then I'll reach out to Dorsey and Whitney and find out what we have to do. I think it is many hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, we came in way better than we thought.
And we got, like, didn't you budget like two point seven million?
It was three point seven total with one point two.
So it's two point seven, and then I think the Varcon was two or one-six, let's just round it up to seven, and then we have that eighty thousand that you approved tonight. For mid-am for electric, which upfront costs us eighty, but all but sixteen of it will get back over the time that people hook on.
Yep.
As credits back, so that'll be eventually some thousands of dollars coming back.
Yep.
But, so I would say, if you use those numbers, it could be nearly nine hundred thousand dollars. That will have to figure out what we want to spend. It's gonna be projects.
We're gonna have a. Water treatment facility that's coming up pretty great.
That's, yep.
I think the key, everything that I've always understood when you borrow money is you have like a three-year window to pay for it. So it'll have to be anything that's in that, you know, but it can be certainly engineering. But again, that's rate payers, that was tax dollars, so you do want to be careful.
Yep.
Normally, you would want to spend it on things that would go towards tax dollars, not rate payers.
Yep, yep.
So that could be stormwater improvements, which are, you know.
Since I, when, when we improve the agendas or any way, I can skip fifteen and come back to it at the end. Since we've got people here.
Yeah.
We can, that department heads and such. We'll get in the codes, it's just a lot of stuff, so I'm gonna skip fifteen for the moment, which is the discussion of the city codes and ordinance updates. Um, and go to number sixteen, updates on the state legislative bills and the January cityscape article. Thank you, Lisa, for including that, and for your work on putting that article together. Um, the League of Cities produces a monthly publication that goes out to all elected officials in the state. City municipal elected officials, um, and they are featuring a number of communities. With regard to how House File seven eighteen is impacting them, and they asked to do an article on Red Oak, and Lisa provided that. Which I've shared and we've shared, um, I do want to point out, uh, as I serve on the League of Cities Board. Um, we have, I'm also on the Legislative Committee. Um, they started, we meet weekly and we talk about all the legislative bills that are coming up or that they're aware of. And what our take is and what, um, concerns we have, I will say that House File seven eighteen, they're now seeing. The impact it makes on TIF and TIF districts, and so it is significant, and Debbie Durham, the State Economic Development Director. Is acknowledging now the impact of House File seven eighteen.
How's it, how's it affecting TIF?
Well, it just, there's so many complexities to that and the rollback and all of that, it just is, it just is. So, it's future growth. And by capping our future growth to, to two percent, it's just, there's a lot of things that are right now before.
Is it taking the TIF authority away from us?
It makes it so that it's not a useful tool for us.
Mm-hmm, so when you think about that TIF, like you grow your tax base, and then we give an incentive.
Yeah.
To be able to give them their tax. Right, and so then the state is saying, instead of getting to grow this much, you can only grow this much.
And then the other piece is, because of that. Communities like Indianola are seeing that their contractors are not as busy as they normally would be this time of year. And so they're starting to lay staff off, and we already know that we can't find developers that are willing to come to our communities to build houses. So it is a serious issue, and I think the, I'm at least pleased that Debbie Durham recognizes the impact that it's having now. Um, so I think you're gonna see some changes coming in the future, um.
It's a good, that, this is a good example of, of all the communities in our state. Being punished, I say punished, but we're all being, we're all being restricted, uh, because of a few bad actors in the state, and I think Indianola is one of them. If I'm not mistaken.
I think the message in my article was just trying to say that. You know, I've worked in highly developing cities, and then I've worked in cities where you're not. And so I always say that like, TIF rules or economic development rules or ability to tax rules. Like unfortunately, at the state level, they try to have one cookie cutter that works for all of us, and so. When I was in the Quad Cities, you could sell a house lot for eighty thousand dollars, and there was no city money in it. And that well paid for the cost, and the developer was allowed to make some money. Here, you, then when I got to Cascade. The developers stopped developing because the cost to install the infrastructure, they could not sell the lots for enough money. And they're not a charity case, so if it was gonna cost eighty-five thousand and a maximum that anybody had ever paid for a lot was sixty, they're done. They're not putting in, they, they were ready, they had land, they wanted to put in a new thirty lot subdivision with their own money, but the numbers don't work. And so there you may have a place for TIF, where we say, but for us helping to help pay some of that gap. Now we can continue to grow our tax base, but if you can sell the lot for eighty thousand dollars, there's no reason. But we create these laws that don't always acknowledge that situations are different in different towns, being rural.
My point exactly.
And the same size community, like you mentioned in Asbury, the average cost of a home is about three hundred and fifty thousand, whereas here it's a hundred and twenty thousand. So if we are trying to run and operate our city on a budget, and we're making a third on our property values. That shows how far we are having to stretch our dollars just to provide basic services, that's the inequity that we're seeing.
And it's also higher pressure on us with that lower value, because if you are in Asbury, you are right next to Dubuque. So if you have to call for mutual aid from a fire department, they're literally right next door, they are across the street of the Northwest Boulevard. Here, we are the main fire department, the only one full-time in our entire county, and so if we call for mutual aid from another full-time department, it's far away. So not only are you poorer from a property value perspective, but you're also more rural, which means that the, the, the services that we provide. There's a much higher demand on, so again, my message more than. You know, like, all these rules are bad, is how do we create rules that acknowledge that there needs to be reasons why. One of us gets to do something that the other doesn't, because it makes sense, not just because, you know, and, and when we fought the battle up north, it was. All the state cared about was that people said they don't want more taxes, which nobody wants more taxes, we don't want more property taxes, we don't want more income taxes. But there's a cost to saying you don't want more taxes.
The other thing that was pointed out is the fact that people are talking about their, their bill, their property tax bill being so much higher. One, not realizing that the city is a percentage, usually about a third, but also that for people who are escrowed. That if they look, the actual increase, the majority of the increase is insurance. And so the cost of insurance is, is out of control on, on a lot of things, and we've had insurance companies leaving the state of Iowa. Because cost to insure is so high.
Because of our weather.
Because of our weather and the amount of debt that they've had to fulfill in the last, fill in for the last couple of years, so anyway, that was also interesting. So I'll keep you posted, I am, um, very pleased to see, um. Uh, House Representative Brett Parker. Uh, sent an email to all of us board members and talked about his fifteen years in local government. And he stated specifically that we need to look at a way that makes it fairer for communities of all different types of situations, so. I feel positive about that, um, that we, we might have somebody in the State House that's actually looking out for local municipalities. Um, Department Reports, Kevin McGrew is here. I don't know if Kevin would like to go over anything, he did provide a nice report in our packet. Kevin, you want to provide, want to go over anything?
No. And any questions, I guess, I, I listed kind of some highlights, uh. You know, some of the things that we've accomplished last year, the big LED lighting project that was finished and completed. Fuel cells were up over twelve percent over the year before. Um, we updated and increased, uh, the, um. Rent fees that we charge our agriculture sprayers, if they run off of our field, they have to pay a yearly fee. And a flowage fee on their fuel they bring in, we cannot mandate that they buy our fuel, but we can have a flowage fee. So if they bring their, uh, own fuel in, their yearly fee is higher, and then they pay, uh, I think it's twenty-five cents a gallon. Flowage fee to bring their own fuel in, um, which brings in some revenue, there's two main sprayers that, uh. Operate off our field that way. Um, all of the hangers and camping fees were increased, so more revenue for the city. Um, I and a commissioner, I think it was Nick Hildreth, went to the Iowa. Uh, Public Airport Association meeting, yearly meeting in, uh, Cedar Falls, uh. Uh, last year, and I think it's, we're coming up again, uh, this year it's gonna be in Okoboji, I think, so hopefully the commission will approve that. Um, I also went to the Four States Conference, uh, Missouri, Kansas. And Nebraska and Iowa meet down in Kansas City once a year, and a bunch of vendors are down there, the federal FAA. Um, is there, plus each state, uh, aviation department is there. And they put on a bunch of, um, seminars and learning opportunities, so that's a good one to go to. Uh, we did have the annual, uh, Flight Breakfast in June, uh, that went very well, we also had an annual, uh. Picnic in August. Um, and then we had the Red Oak, uh, Chamber Leadership Program came out to the airport, and I think we'll be doing that again here soon. And some training videos for me, uh, the Grass Runway, uh, one-three-three-one was reconditioned by. Uh, the commission members, we basically, uh, tore up the center part, reseated and repacked it, and it was shut down for a short time. And opened back up, so it's smoother now, and works better. Um, we're also in the early stages of planning for a. In the early stages of planning for another hangar out there, we'll be using some federal FAA grant money. They're usually ninety, ten. And then the state has a program where we can do an eighty, twenty up to a certain limit. We don't know the final cost yet because we haven't put it out for bids. Our engineering firms Snyder and Associates, no, excuse me, McClure and Associates. Have got an estimate for us, but we. Have not, they haven't finalized the plans yet. Then the state will look it over, the federal will look it over if they see any changes. Sometimes. They say, oh, you need thicker concrete there. So we have to change that or you don't need so much concrete. But hopefully in the next month or two, those plans will be done and sent in for review. And then at some point we'll send it out for bids and depending on how the bids come back from the contractors will have. Some final numbers at that point.
Where are you looking to put that?
And it'll be just east of the last one out there in line. So we can use the. Taxiway going down on the east one. We'll, we'll call it number. So just farther out east, just it'll be very similar to the other ones we have. There'll be three doors on each side. And we have quite, right now I've got over thirty names on a waiting list, just waiting. I get calls every month from somebody, do you have an open space to put a plane in? So obviously, we will charge them for it. And that, that fee will be set. By the Commission and it depends how it's finished off. If it's finished off. More complete or nicer, it'll probably have a higher monthly fee than the other ones.
So if I understand it correctly, didn't one of the spraying outfits that used to use the field move south of town to shore?
Yes, but they still, yes, you're right, Meyer.
Cedar Ridge.
Cedar Ridge Aviation used to rent our building. But they built their own facility south of town, but they still use our field. So they still pay a ramp fee and a flowage.
I guess I was gonna ask you how that affects you and your air traffic control and all that kinda stuff, just having them working south of town.
Well, it actually made it easier on our airport because they had like ten helicopters and ten pilots and ten trucks. And ten truck drivers and mechanics. Now Meyer Corp Aviation out of Tarkio, they rent the building. But they only have about four airplanes. So they have a lot less. Traffic going back and forth. Plus they're more local and they're very nice to work with. They're polite. And they do a good job of taking care of our field.
Just better for you. Better for you. That's my question.
And you also have now gotten everybody's hangar agreements all on the same time.
Changed that out. Yeah, I was thinking I should have put that down. Took a lot of work from the city and the clerks.
Much easier in the big picture.
But now everybody's on the same. We used to have some hangers due every month out of the year, twelve, twelve different months, twelve different groups of. Leases were due and. And now it's all been brought together. So everybody's will be due in December to be new to January. So that'll be a, a big improvement for City Hall especially. And I think. The last one was most of my equipment, all of my equipment's in good shape, tractors, my mowers. So I don't see. Upgrades needed for repairs or trade-ins or anything like that as far as the airport goes.
And Kevin, I, I, I just say that for as big a facilities and all the, the stuff that you have. To take care of out there, you do a wonderful job. It's one thing, I never worry about what's going on at the airport.
Thank you. It all comes with the city administrator and the, the mayor and the city council.
Well, I thank you for your attention to detail out there.
Well, we do have a nice airport.
Wonderful airport. So thank you for all you do. Thank you, Kevin. And he also has hosted IJAG and the Youth Council too, so. Trying to get some young people interested in flying. Alright, thank you, Kevin. We also have a report from Taylor. He was here last time, but he's not here tonight. I just wanted to point out, you know, like he currently has four open court cases, just. But he's trying to minimize, get all those down. His active cases, he's listed out there by offense from tall grass to animals to barking. Trash, junk, pet licenses, nuisances, building permits, branches, dead trees, et cetera, et cetera. I think four of those trash ones are in court right now, right?
We have citations issued. So again, I think, you know, part of the garbage discussion is that people don't think we're doing anything when it comes to nuisances. But there's fifty-three cases plus the four that have gone to court. And it's not really a simple process. So it's not as if we're not doing anything, you know, people may or may not notice, but. It's challenging to get all that stuff taken care of.
Very costly as well.
That being the only tool that we use. It's not gonna go away if we do end up going with garbage, but.
Even one particular. Property that we recently had to clean up ourselves after it went through the whole process is already starting to look like it did before. And it's literally been a month or two.
Right, so that was done the week of Thanksgiving. And I did check with Bree about that. So if you'll recall, it was a parcel that we went in. We had a final, I don't remember if we gave him a week or some, ten days, something like that. As a final, once the court decision was made. He had that opportunity to clean it up. And then if not, we went in. So we went in. He received a bill for thirty-six hundred dollars. Again, when people talk about the cost of doing business and what we do, one house. Thirty-six hundred dollars that we sent them. We may or may not get paid. The bill will go out. The next round of, if it goes out again in thirty days unpaid, they will be notified that it'll go on the tax roll, which will help us collect that. In that court case, it was that you are in contempt of court if you do the same thing within the next year. We're already at two months with a significant amount of junk on the outside again. I had Taylor go and take pictures. I sent a notice to Bree. And we served him with a letter last week, letting him know that he was in contempt of that case. And then if it wasn't cleaned up, and I think we gave him two weeks, that we would be back in court. And we'll come and get it again. And we'll come and get it again. But again, that's what I think is challenging for people to understand. And that stuff's not like stinky. Pesty garbage, that's just stuff. And so there are still gonna be cases like that. But if we were to take hundreds of those. And that's the only way to resolve them, it's a lot of money. So it does not mean we're not doing it, but that's just an example.
Good deal. So you all have Taylor's report. I do like how he spells out what his next steps are, you know, in the community aesthetics improvement. Which obviously is one of our, one of the four pillars. And it was the pillar that we identified in our strategic plan. That's the most important in twenty twenty-five. Ongoing monitoring, community improvement and community outreach. He's really trying to educate people. He's obviously not doing a whole lot with. Yard stuff, but it looks like it will soon be more focused on snow and ice, but I'd walk some things like that. So. So we'll see more of that.
He is kind of taking an active role in the rental inspection. So if you'll recall, we had our meeting last week. When we have people coming in. He is helping to answer those questions and he's the one relaying the information to Swift Post so that I didn't have to deal with that. Last week they started the first of the inspections. They actually went to my house. I was out of town and. I just had him go through. And so Taylor went with them to that, just to kinda walk through with Phil so that he would be able to speak firsthand. And felt like then he wasn't going into anybody else's house. So he went through with them. I did speak to Sherry, as you recall, that she was one of those people. That had expressed some concerns. She said it was a positive experience. There was at the three houses that she, she did three houses right away last week together. And I think there were two or three minor things in each of her houses. So she was able to. Turn it around immediately to get them done. And they were minor enough that Phil was comfortable saying, I don't need to come back and check them. I trust that they're small enough. So. She said it was a positive experience. Hopefully we can continue to get that word out. Spoke to Matt Riley, who also has a significant number of parcels. Had a good conversation with him. He wasn't positive on which ones were on the list this time. So he's gonna turn them all in and then we'll let him know how much he owes, just to make sure that he was paying the right one. So I think there's a lot of people that are working on compliance. I. And Taylor will kinda keep an eye on those things. And, and I do think, just as a wrap up to the meeting that we had last Monday. I think it is relevant that we should create some level of rewards for those who do comply well. My point to some of the people that I talked to after were, we still have to go through one full cycle. Because we're not gonna say based on the past, that you get this free pass to go to save five years. And if. If you do a good job and the, the property doesn't turn over, that could be like another exception. That if. The good landlord sells it and now we don't know who you are because you don't get the free pass, then it stays with the landlord. You know, if they did a great job, then whatever. So. I think it's something to consider and have an open mind on our end, but we have to get through one full cycle, I think, before we do that. And I said to Sherry when we talked. I said, you know, you can get to the third year and if people are worried that we can't extend it, we can extend you and say. If you were in year one of two thousand twenty-five, and you've now decided under these parameters that you're, even though what we gave you in twenty-five said you expired. At the end of twenty-seven, we can extend that. And notify them in writing that they've been extended based on a change. And so I don't think we know the answer to that, but I think just keeping an open mind is why.
I love it. I think it's good. Do you have anything else you wanna add from an administrator's report?
My report? So I emailed the council that we have a vacancy on the fire department for our full-time employee. Applications are being accepted until January twenty-ninth. And then what we did to just be efficient with timing because. Michael Kraus, who is the person that's leaving, will be done before we actually are able to hire someone. And so right in the application process, it let people know that if they are applying, that they're expected to be at the physical agility on the eighth. And then we will turn around immediately that as long as you pass the physical agility on a Saturday, you'll be expected to be in on an interview on Monday. So we'll probably just get ahold of people that apply and say, remember, you need to have an opening for yourself to come in on the tenth. Just to be efficient, if you get long dates ahead of time, it's easier to turn it around. We, the state of the city, all of you are welcome to come to the mayor's. If you're available tomorrow at one o'clock, we'll be at Arlington Place. It's not really open to the public. It'll be, I mean, certainly it's a public. Meeting if the mayor's there and people could show, but it wasn't really intended to be inviting people for this first year. So the residents that are. Able to come and that they bring will be an audience. You're welcome to come. And then we're gonna videotape it. And then Taylor has some ability to kinda spice up the, like be able to put in her name on the bottom, kind of what it is.
And so that'll be on Facebook.
And then we'll put it on Facebook and YouTube. The way that we kinda put it out there was by Thursday. So that it'll give him Wednesday or Thursday morning to make sure that it's, if there's any. Editing that we have to do. And then like I said, have our logo on the bottom, say what it is. I'm also gonna, I've asked him to. Try and do that on our current videos on here. Like I'd like that if you get to YouTube. That while you're watching it on the bottom, it's, it's always saying what you're watching, as opposed to like not minus the. Name on the video, but while you're watching it, if you get to it, you don't know what you're watching. It's a city council meeting and what the date was. So yes, we'll put it out on the airwaves. On Thursday. A reminder that we have planning and zoning. So it's planning and zoning, Board of Appeals and the council, super effective for all the. Changes that come with zoning and understanding what your guidelines are at the state level. So. Luke Seberg will be here. He comes from Ames at ISU.
That's tomorrow night at five thirty here.
Right, five thirty should be done by about eight. And we'll have some pizzas and stuff, so you can just kinda come straight through. The squad car that we had authorized is up for sale. Bids are due tomorrow at two thirty. I think we had one or two bids already, so that hopefully we'll get sold. And everybody but John signed up to be at the Chamber Annual Meeting, which is Wednesday night. And then the chief and I, fire chief and I will be meeting. And then I think a couple of you sometimes attend as well. But the Rural Board Meeting for the Fire Department, their three-year contract is up. We tried to be super proactive this year. I think in the past, they were just giving everything the night of the meeting and kinda heard some comments that they tend to take a while. So I met with. Honey Malat and the chief and myself, we went over everything. They used to only get like a summary of the budget. We gave them like a. Gory detail in every account, just to help them understand like what goes into vehicle repairs, what goes into building repairs to give them a little bit better comfort level. On the things that we're spending. And then we agreed to go and. Mail to each town clerk, which there are eight town clerks and then the mayor of Coburn. We mailed each of them a very large packet of four packets per township, so that the clerk could then give them out to their three board members. And again, just in that kind of trying to be more transparent, help people have some time to prepare like we are for our council meetings. And so hopefully. That sort of equates to a. A little bit more effective meeting on Thursday. So we'll see what reaction we get from that. But hopefully that was a positive change. For our rural partners when it comes to fire.
Can you update them on the status of the union contracts and budgeting process?
So, union contracts, I've had one meeting with the fire department. So the state law now allows, instead of everything having to be meeting in person, you can do written proposals to each other. So. The union usually goes first and gives us a presentation of what they'd like to see. And then we respond and then we meet. So fire went first. We responded and then we met one time. Police went second, I responded to them. Both chiefs have been involved in that. Kind of what we're looking at. Of course, it's in good faith, that everybody knows that at the end, it ultimately has to come before the council. And then we now need to set up a meeting with the, the police department. By law, we have to be done by the end of March. Or we have to ask for an extension for that. And so that would be effective for. Timing with the budget. So that'll be good.
So like last year, if I'm not mistaken, they got like twice the pay raise everybody else got. What are they talking about this year? Are you at Liberty discussing any of that at this moment?
I mean, they each asked for something different, but they probably, I think there was a three to six, depending on which union.
They got like seven last year, right?
Seven point seven five on police and five.
Yeah, so I explained, you know, there's budgetary constraints and I think they know that they got bigger raises in the past. So I don't think they're gonna be six and seven percent again.
It's certainly bigger than the rest of our employees got.
So, yeah, so we're working on that. And then budget, all the department heads have their sheets. And are working on their numbers to get back to me here in the next week or so, hopefully. And then the reason that Ashley and I met with one of my colleagues, the retired marshal town, is that G-Works, there's a way. Challenging and tedious to drop G-Works numbers into an Excel spreadsheet, which is super effective compared to. Chicken scratching in G-Work. So I need to work on getting all that transferred so that the document we'd be looking at would have twenty-three fiscal year end, twenty-four fiscal year end. Where we're at in twenty-five and then of course projecting out twenty-six.
That's what I would like to see.
That's what you will see.
Thank you. Alright, my mayor's report, I did include just a. We do. I was just gonna go through this real quick and then if we go back to fifteen and then you guys also. So I provided you with a written, I already kinda touched on some of the legislative updates. In this, I've listed out some of the meetings that I've had in the past month. Some of the grants that we're working on or looking at and considering, and then upcoming events coming up here in the near future. I also mentioned that House File seven eighteen. And another topic, and I meant to say it before Bo left, was. The state is looking at changing the fireworks. Ordinance to be one day. Well, three days throughout the whole year, but only one day each. So that may make a change to what we're talking about.
We have now?
Right now we have eleven hour, we're twelve hours from eleven in the morning until eleven at night on the Fourth of July. We've talked about making it the day before, fourth and the day after.
And you know, and I get.
I think you do what you wanna do. Because the state can talk about something for ten.
And they may not do it. So, yeah.
I mean, I, I get that we need to restrict it, you know, for a lot of different reasons. But the thing I can't wrap my head around is. We restrict fireworks to one or two days, whatever it is per year, but we let them sell them for months and months and months. And I just. I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how that all works out.
I assume they're paying a peddler.
Peddler means you're going to sell them.
But, but what I'm getting is when you're selling them for months and you're restricting them to days, you're just kind of encouraging people to break the law.
I don't know.
Well, we can get to that.
It's interesting. The Local Leaders Day is coming up on March fourth. And I think, Tim, you're, you've responded that you'd like to go. She can, she can register.
He's registered through the lead now.
Yep.
March fourth.
March fourth. No, I think it's a Wednesday.
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Okay, got it. So anyway, just wanted you to.
And are you guys good going just a day up and back? She has to stay overnight.
Normal end of the day, four or five.
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
The Capitol closes, so kinda get kicked out. Yep.
Somebody can go with her on the way up.
I'm gonna go that morning. I'm gonna go that morning.
Have somebody could ride up with Karen.
Yep. And then just the, I just had that note about the state of the city and I'm working on finishing that tonight. And so we'll have that ready tomorrow. So that's all I have. City council reports. Sharon, do you have anything to report?
Well, I attended the D U R meeting on the eighth, the downtown urban revitalization, and we approved um, several of the. Uh, upgrades for the downtown buildings.
They're all in the bills that we approved.
Yeah. Uh, also, I attended the rental inspection meeting that we had here on the thirteenth, and then I'd like to say that I did. Um, Washington rental state of the state address, which is very good. Everybody, I recommend everybody wa- uh, look at it.
Absolutely. We're number one for millennial how homeownership, which is significant. In the state.
There was a lot in her address.
But we're also number two for two years in a row on increased cancer.
I saw that. That's not bad.
Yeah, it was good though. Okay, anything else?
That's all.
Okay, Brian?
I have nothing.
Really?
Really? Lisa takes all my thunder things. She goes all the things I used to. But that's great. I love it.
Tim, you really?
Yeah, I had a Y M C board meeting and then, of course, that was at the rental inspection meeting.
Okay. John? Okay, Adam?
Rental inspection meeting.
Okay.
I guess I was.
All, all of you were there.
We are all there. It was a special meeting. Yeah, okay. Um, all right. And we've got the reminder of the planning and zoning training, um, the chamber annual meeting and then the rural fire. Has there any other items for the agenda? And then we can talk about what we want to do with. I'm gonna make a pro- proposal on the. That'll be two weeks. Yep. Any other things for the agenda?
Yeah, the ordinances.
Yeah.
So we have chickens, fireworks and cats.
Okay, so now we're back to ordinances. I'm just wondering if it would be wise to have like a couple of us go through the ordinances. Work with Lisa to make the changes, then we present those changes to the full council for review rather than. What are your thoughts?
Person in the council.
I figured I would go through them because I'm trying to read them word for word, but. I'm open to anybody else that wants to do it.
I can tell you that when the council didn't go through it, which is like, I, I know it's not pleasant, but. I went to a city that the whole thing was a disaster because. For you and me to be the only ones to go through it and then like people that went to meetings before and have knowledge, like that's the only bad thing. Like it was.
Yeah.
It was like hunting and pecking in a hayfield to like look for the things that were wrong because.
Yeah.
The problem with that one was they did a boilerplate and then you had to backtrack to like what your city was doing. So it's unpleasant, but. Once we do this, this one time, then hopefully it never has to happen again.
I was just saying, I, if, if everybody would please make sure you read through them and if you have changes, like give them to Lisa or bring them here. At night on the council nights, but I mean, it's a lot to read those and.
If the one on the chickens is.
I know.
Yeah, and I went and looked at some other ones that were, I thought, simpler, but. Um, I do appreciate the comment about not having a building permit for any of their, I don't, cages or whatever.
And I, and then Bo blocked the thing that there was not a specified number of, of square feet that a ca- cage is uh, when it's occupied.
It did. It's in there, but it has to be. It does, it has to be uh.
In the, in the updated one or on our current one?
On the one that's. Not in the old one.
We don't have urban chickens.
It literally just says a farm permit and someone called me and said, oh, I'm looking to see what the farm permit rules are. And I'm like, we got none. We just had that you have to have a permit. So. Propose what you want and then I'll review it, which is super uncomfortable.
I was flipping through the chicken one. I think that all sounds really good. I mean, maybe there needs to be a few details, but I thought it, it worked well.
Well, and, and we don't have anything for like rabbits. These are rabbits and we've got goats. We've got people that are using goats to like.
Well, that would be a farm animal and then we would just say no.
So I, I guess, I feel like we need to be a little bit more conscientious about a couple of those things, maybe.
So do we, number one, are we saying yes, we're good with chickens because we've kind of been good with chickens?
I think it's funny.
I, I, the council, this is before I was on the council, but the council voted on that. It's been. Six years ago and they, they all decided to allow.
Oh, you did find it? That we did?
I don't think it happened.
It, I was sitting in the meeting when they talked about it. It was. There, there was, it may not have been done by resolution, it may not have been correctly, but, but the council.
Yeah.
Stated that it was okay to have six chickens that had residence in the city of.
That's what I've always heard too, but again, we can't find anything to verify that.
Yeah, no, I, 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 it was never caught by it for sure.
I do think it needs to say, you know, a number and. But they need to make sure they have water because we've had people call about the chickens that are around them that have been left for weeks at a time with no food or water.
Like, can't police everything.
Yeah, and then the waste removal too. Um.
Yeah.
That's a big part of it because it, they stink.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was in seventeen that there was.
I think that's why the limit was fixed.
You never know. But the other thing is where the coop should be located is, is, and this one specifically says in a backyard. Area and certain feet away from the neighbors.
Five foot away.
Yeah, yeah. I, I like a lot of what's in there for the, for having a chicken pit, so.
I just basically said, we don't have it in there. We would like the best practice type of.
Yep.
I like what we have. I definitely like it.
I think it's good that it says a tenant has to get landlord's permission. Yeah, it says. The applicant has provided notice to the residents of everyone within a hundred foot radius, which is basically just gonna be immediate neighbors. Um, they have to give me a site plan. We give them a permit. I can deny it. Appeal comes before you. What do we think about the fee?
Uh.
By the time you actually process it, like even though it's a hundred dollars, like I think we're gonna have to look at some other ones. I mean. Even just for me to review it for an hour and stat time and receipting it, you're at a hundred dollars easily.
Oh, I think that's more than fair at this point.
Yeah. And then to renew seventy-five. Reinspection fees. The leg bands, does that mean we would then have to have these leg bands at the city hall?
Leg bands on there.
Six pages just for urban chicken.
Yeah, because if it's bad.
You don't want to put leg bands in a chicken. We do have people that rate rabbits out here.
See, I was saying rabbits and.
And they, it was just more than one and it was pretty foul smelling back in that person's yard.
You know, there's a lot of like, you know, the state has regulations. If you, if you set a, a trout line in the river, you have to put your name and your address on it. Just like, you know, if you own a chicken in town, you gotta have a leg band on. There's regulations that go along with certain activities.
I don't believe that, did, do I recall the noise ordinance? Do we talk much?
No roosters.
I don't remember if we did talk about that. No roosters. I do remember that.
Putting up our noise for chickens or?
Mm-hmm, noise for chickens.
Odor and noise impact, so it does touch on that.
Touches on it.
If you have a person that is not cleaning up after their.
Mm-hmm.
Animal, they should be called in. It's reasonable.
Chickens at large. It's a whole section on chickens at large.
I think it says here that you can't sell them. I believe you, but this I think.
The permit shall not allow the permitted chickens to roam off the permitted tract of land. No dog or cat or other domesticated animal which kills a chicken off the permitted track of land. Will for that reason alone not be considered a dangerous or aggressive animal, or the city's responsibility to enforce its animal control divisions. So.
So if chickens get out and they get attacked, it's not.
It's.
The dogs.
It's not the dog's.
Dog or cat.
Just saying.
Or.
Or the.
Or a human.
All right.
So it does say on here that a permit shall not allow them to engage in breeding, selling of eggs or chickens. So you're supposed to be doing it in this code for your own good. Not that you can just have two dollars and, well, probably not four dollars if it's some legs.
Right, if you get two bucks, it doesn't let me. It can't be kids for age projects. We go for a lot of it.
Yeah. Are we opposed to that though? Are we opposed to kids like ha- doing raising chickens for making business out of it?
All right, all right.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's not meant to be a home-based business.
It's not meant to be a business.
You want to raise chickens. Get a piece of land and raise chickens.
The whole idea of the ordinance, so you can have your own fresh eggs.
Okay, got it.
Not if you have butcher hands or if you can.
Yeah, it does. You, you're not supposed to butcher. Not, it's not for butcher hands. It's for eggs. It's for eggs.
They don't allow ducks. I mean, I wondered about ducks too. I mean, some people like ducking.
Ducks would be a arm animal permit then.
Okay, got it.
That might be a noise issue as well.
All right. So, so I guess we're okay with this. What about the fireworks one?
So let's clarify first of all, that I asked for the, I said that we might want to restrict the days. A lot of this is like our code and then these days are the maximum that you can do. So you can be less restrictive, but you cannot be.
More.
You cannot be more lenient.
Yeah, there we go.
Sorry.
Is that where you keep up with that date? Yeah, that's where he came up with this date was June, June one to July. That was Bo Harris.
Right, so he was saying, why are you letting for a month? So this was just a draft from a certification company.
Yeah.
And then most that you can do right now in Iowa is this month in the summer, to your point of that's probably when they're selling fireworks. And then we were talking about just, do we only want to do the fourth of July or do we want to do like third, fourth, fifth or whatever?
Yeah, we talked.
You can always be more restrictive, but you couldn't say we can do it every day of the year in Red Oak, Iowa. We can't say that. That's why the month is in here because that's the state language. So that's the max that you can allow it and then we can shorten her up.
And then we are also talked about the hours, which they go into explanation for. A lot of dif- like, we could make it simpler there. I think the way we talked about it was better, but.
Well, people like them off anyway. They don't.
So remember, the key is you always had to have a permit here.
Mm-hmm.
Which is, that was the main thing. And we are saying, if it's outside, um, these days with which you might pick. On those days, you don't need a permit because no one is getting a permit. And the reality of the fire department, excuse me, the police department. Is that they are not gonna go jack somebody up most likely on the third or fourth that don't have a permit. And we did not, we had one person. Came to city hall when we were at our strategic planning on the thirtieth. We wanted to shoot them off on New Year's Eve. Because we were there on the thirty, if you recall, that were at the.
Mm-hmm.
Agora. And uh, Donna was like, are we issuing it? And I was like, we'll get our application. Because if somebody made the effort to come in, that's the proper thing to do. Now, that was New Year's, which is obviously a lot less than the fourth of July would be, but. It's just not practical that you're gonna shut everybody down in town for not getting a permit. So this is saying. We all sort of acknowledge that on the fourth of July or on New Year's, we have more fireworks. And are we okay just saying on those days, you don't have to get a permit? And then on the other days, you can still do it, but you have to get a permit. And it would be rare, so you'd be able to go find the people and be a lot easier for the police to say, hey, you gotta knock it off. You don't have a permit. But on these days, we would just be able to.
Do it without a permit. So you're saying the fourth and New Year's Eve, those two days, no permit?
Well, what we talked about when we talked about it the first time was we talked about the third.
Fourth of that.
Maybe the fifth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think I got one, I think we both got an email from someone that said they didn't like that, but.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like it's not just the fourth.
Yeah. Just because so many, if it falls in a Wednesday or whatever, and the way families get together on the fourth, the weekends. I don't know. It seems to me like it's one of those holidays that's getting stretched out.
So you have to decide what days.
Yeah, what do you guys think?
I will just speak up then. I think the third and the fourth. I don't think the fifth. If we're gonna add an extra day, make it third.
I did a lot of noise complaints from people that have shy dogs and things that they get tired of.
And that's never gonna end, but.
You don't think it's enough, Sharon?
I think it is.
I, I think. I, I wouldn't do it any more than that, is what I'm saying. I.
I, I wouldn't do it for three days.
I wouldn't do three days. I think two is plenty.
Third and fourth is fine.
And I think again, we just have to be more proactive, like we try to be with snow and different things like that to say. You know, we can put something out there in the middle of June or when the fireworks places start selling, to your point and say.
I think those flyers were very helpful.
Those vendors should have like the city or those.
We could even make like an easier flyer though that says, if you are shooting these off on any day other than the third and the fourth in the city of Red Oak. You need a permit. Here's where to get the information. And then if it's on the third and the fourth, you're exempt. If you're out of town.
And then if you're okay with New Year's Eve as well.
New Year's Eve.
I'm good with New Year's Eve also.
Yep.
And how late do we want to say that they can shoot them off?
You're saying nine in the morning to eleven at night? I would.
What is it now? Do we do eleven?
Eleven.
New Year's Eve, though, eleven's not work.
I feel like at my house this year, I heard them at midnight and I was like.
You're looking for the night effects. I mean, you're talking summer and it gets. It takes a lot longer to get dark.
Teen until it's real dark.
Thing is, a lot of them are letting out, doing them out in the street.
Uh-huh.
I think it should be, you know, just on their property, not out.
Well, and that happens in my neighborhood and sometimes they don't bother to clean the streets after they're done. So it's, it's an issue in my neighborhood.
People get flat tires and everything.
I think people think about going out in the street because it's further from their property and it's safer that way, but.
Well, stuff that's on top of rules.
Do we want to say something in here that it cannot be on public right of way that you're shooting it off? So then if the cops won't pass, even on the no permit days, they can be like.
They can be in their driveway, but not out.
Not public street.
Yeah.
So no public right of way.
Because we were trying to get down the street, I remember last year, and they were setting off fireworks. And here, all this stuff was in the street.
I don't know if you should say public drive because that would include sidewalks and stuff. I, you know, street.
Between the curves or shoulders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because, you know, that, that would prevent people from using sidewalks. I, I, I get that, but I mean, you know, they can't shoot them off on, you know, on their porch. And if we're gonna allow them to do it, we have to at least give them some space to do it.
Space to do it.
A sidewalk that they can do it on.
So we'll say cur- if there's curves or shoulders, it cannot be on public right of way between two curves or between two.
Yep.
And then we're gonna say, should we say till eleven o'clock during the fourth of July and twelve, fifteen on New Year's?
I would say yes. Because what's the point of doing?
Yeah, at eleven o'clock if it's not New Year's.
Yeah. So yes, I would agree.
New York ball drops.
Yep, okay.
You can do it anyway. It doesn't matter.
So boring.
Yep.
I do like the, the property injury, property damage, all that stuff in there too, just for liability purposes. I don't know if those amounts are right or not, but. I mean, people, it's their own personal.
Again, this is if you get a permit and you're doing like a public display.
Oh, 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 I'm reading that wrong. Sorry. I was thinking.
A fireworks.
Yes, we do.
Who doesn't?
We do.
We do?
Our fire.
Well, we hire it done. We, don't we hire somebody out though?
We hire it done. We, we pay, we bless you. We paid nine thousand dollars to hire it done.
Shoot them off at the fair.
By the high school.
Yeah. Sports, what are they called? Sports.
It's my first experience with city government and my mother was in charge of the fourth of July where I grew up. It was.
Um, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read the one for trap neuter release, if you put that.
I read that.
Did you? Um, there's some things I still am not a hundred percent sure on, so I've looked into it, but.
So my question, because I've never worked in a place that has this because I. But this is just giving people permission and then who is paying for all this? Because it's not up.
Well, absolutely. This is like organizations and or rescues that do it. But there are individuals that just do it too.
But you have to apply?
I don't think they should have to apply.
Well, how the heck do you know that they're like, looking? Seems weird. Again, because I'm not used to it, but. So it has this community cat caregiver.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, a person who in accordance with and pursuant to this policy provides care, medical care, while not considered the owner. They're like literally.
They're not neutering themselves. No, they're taking them to a licensed vet to have this stuff.
Some people are doing it anyway, like they.
Some people are doing it anyway, like the.
No, like.
I wanna do the ear tipping. That's what I wanna do.
Any cat that is picked up for the. Uh, goal of taking it in to get it neutered. Spade and a rabies. And it gets their top ear tipped and then we, that's how you know that it's been.
And tipping versus notching, it's just you use local terms.
We have.
Do you use that York limit?
We do neither. We tattoo the incision.
That's right, you do.
So then do we need to say that somehow?
The challenge for that.
I think, I think you could probably just make them, the disclaimer that the cat will be. In some way be identified by some means, whether it is a notch or a tattoo.
What does tattoo mean?
It's literally a little green tattoo.
Yeah, a little green tattoo on the incision. You don't ever see, you'd have to get, you know, fur, fur once it grows back, but it's just a little green dot.
The challenge is if you're trying to do this, you know, every two to three years or whatever.
So it might be easier to identify if you've got feral cats, but yeah, if their ear is notched, then you could just visually, it's easier to visually see, but again, we just don't because. What we do is typically domesticated.
So it's like, not to be weird, but it's like literally by their little parts. Right at the incision from their belly.
Yes.
To be weird.
Well, no, but when you're doing a spay, it's not. The spay is on the belly essentially, so.
I don't know what you're doing on the male.
You don't.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Well, typically the parts are gone on a neuter, so. Yeah, I don't think you need to tattoo it at that.
Oh nice, the women get tattooed, but the men don't.
So some cities.
But, but, but then we're releasing back out.
That's what we're talking about is do we, do we ear notch them, tip them, or it is standard for T N R.
Right.
Protocol to do a tip, because then if you're taking care of a, a. I'm gonna call it a herd, a whole grouping of, of cats, you can tell which ones have been just by looking at their ears. That's why it's done that way.
Yeah.
That's why it's originally done.
I wanna do the ear tipping.
Hmm?
I wanna do the.
You wanna be the one to cut the ear.
Yeah.
No, no.
They're not licensed.
But, I mean, I, I can see where we might wanna say that they're altered by a. Licensed veterinarian or a vet that is providing those services for an animal rescue.
Well, it does actually say that already in E, it says that it is in sterile conditions. I don't know if it's in compliance.
With a licensed veterinarian.
It's, it's all in there.
But I mean, there are individuals. That I won't say whom, do this. On their own to like take care, so that we reduce the number of animals in the area and they also maintain better health.
That's what you're saying. People are spaying or neutering on their own.
They're picking animals that are clearly.
They're doing the physical act or they're taking them to places like.
Wait, I'm gonna.
They're hearing you tell me that they're doing the physical act.
Wait, I'm gonna say they're doing the physical act.
No, they're not doing the physical act. They're, they're trapping them.
So I'm not the only one that heard it that way. Thank you.
Taking them to someone who's licensed to do these services, then they return it and release it.
Okay.
So that is the community cat caregiver.
Yes.
I'm just dying on the code.
I mean, the only place I know that there's a real, down by Wilson Park.
Five cats in the code.
Or a southwest part of Red Oak.
We have five cats in the code right now.
No, we have, well, we have four, and I do think that those numbers should change too.
Four, okay, we'll have less.
No, more.
I can do five.
Yeah, so anyway, um. But I mean, I think T N R for cats at least helps the population. Cats can have so many kittens. Yeah, like they can do two cycles a year and they can start having kittens while they're still kittens.
Yeah. Look at the old pyramid that tells how many.
It's like.
That could be, yeah, it's ridiculous.
Cats is crazy.
So, so if, uh, Mr. Bane goes out. And traps cats, what, what do we do with them? Feral cats.
We've not been trapping them because we have nowhere to put them right now. We currently, if someone calls and reports something or one's injured or whatever, it's going out to the, the vet clinic. And it's help. We are not doing that yet.
So.
I mean, we are paying for it as taxpayers because Tim has on, okay, so in most communities that I've worked in, we had a place with our code says we have to hold on to them for three days. I think what would be best. More effective, more cost effective at least is that, because the reason that Tim has charges to us immediately. Is because our animals that are random, unknown, maybe vaccinated, maybe not, are getting put into the population with his. Paying customers that have. Supposedly healthy cats, or if they're there, they're sick, but they're like, we just have to be random cats.
Yeah.
So if you had, like in most cities I've worked in, we had like a place on city property where like someone like. Sorry if Clint is listening. A lot of people that work at wastewater who have to come in every day, water wastewater, you might take like. Out at the shop, you would have like an end of a building that would have some like bays. That have like straw and hay, whatever that they're in there. And then there's an outdoor run, so the cops come, drop it off there, and then we're not worried about. Right away chipping, vaccinating because. Where, where I see the problem with our current system and I get why we're getting those charges, but it becomes super. Disincentivized to pick up your dog in one day, you could get a two hundred dollar bill, because if we went through the process of chipping it. Which is good in one respect.
It is good.
Um, to make sure it's a runner, that it gets back, but there's an immediate, like it could. Not that they're like taking it in and two seconds later doing these things, but. So there's this bill that then makes it expensive to come and get it. But it seems like most of them that get dropped are not getting picked up. There, or more not, I feel like than are. So if your dog is loose, it. Seems like in Red Oak, it's loose for a reason. Like they're just running and.
Which is, yeah.
Super sad, but anyway, so if we had a place to house them for three days. Then that would eliminate some of the costs of someone that genuinely just loses their dog who wants to come and get it. And then, then there is what's after that. And what I've said to the mayor, who I know is very passionate about animals. Is that this community has to decide if we're gonna do something about animals, because I got called by different people that are. With organizations that deal with animals and that I was. Quoted by saying that I'm going to or have been euthanizing them after three days. I'm like, I've never said the word euthanize an animal while I've been in Red Oak, Iowa.
That is what our code says, but.
Right, so they're like, well, that, I said, who told you that? Well, that's what I was told, that someone heard you say that. I'm like, well, that's not true. But we do have to come up with a plan, because what I'm saying is that we don't have a countywide or community wide. Um. Human society. We have the animal alliance that has told us that they're going away in July, that they're. Just not able to continue on. And then we have, uh, the place out on Summit.
Uh, corn dogs.
Corn dogs.
Which she would possibly hold animals if she has room.
Right.
But we do, this is, this is something I really got to address. Or we work with the vet clinic to build on something that could be. Used for holding an animal as a pound.
Right, but I think the reality though, it sort of goes along with the garbage. Is that what is, sorry, I have to bring these two things into it, but it is what the public.
Where you go.
Should, sorry, what the public should be paying for.
Yeah.
Because are we providing public money because we need to house your dog for a short amount of time? And then what's happening to the animals? Because it's expensive to have a building. It is expensive to pay for all this stuff. And is this community, not seven people sitting around the table, passionate about that? And does the community care enough? Because I'm not supportive of euthanizing, but. If nobody in the community cares enough to give to a cause that is not a money-making deal, then that is an option that many communities go for. Not saying that we should, but the community has to care, not the people sitting in leadership of the city.
And the, the thing that I've done is I've had an animal rescue, which where we did fosters, but I had a relationship. With the city of Nebraska City and the vet at Nebraska City. So when an animal would come in from the city. Animal control person, they would contact me and let me know. I would go online and publicize it as much as I could to find out if it had an owner. If it didn't have an owner, then I needed money to be able to pay for after the three days fees that the city was going to acquire. And so usually then the city would pay for those three days. But anything after the three days, if I said I wanted that animal and I was gonna find it at home, then all those fees I started, I had to go. Spay and neuter it. And I had to get all the vaccinations and, and chip them. So then I paid for those, but I raised the money to do that. And then I paid the vet clinic to continue holding it until I had a foster home to take it to. And so the reason this is important is, w- once animal alliance is gone, we don't have anywhere. And we've now started. Attending to animals which had not been done in the last three years, well, four years ago. It was just. Booked upon. I mean, they just turned their eye. Um, because the city didn't want to deal with it and the police didn't want to deal with it. The police didn't wanna chase down animals. So this is where we.
Dogs, we're talking about cats, cause right, this one we're talking about is cats.
Well, this is just cats, but it's, it's relevant to talk about both, because a lot of times these cats are very adoptable. They're not feral. Most of them are community cats, which means if they had the opportunity to be. Adoptable, they could be.
Rather than euthanizing. If a cat, if a cat is, has no collar, hasn't been spayed or neutered, it's a feral cat.
It's considered a community cat.
Feral cat.
Feral cat to me.
Well, I'm just saying, go to Wilson Park.
Feral is a cat that can't be.
They have, they have boxes out there. Cat boxes out there. We have people that go out there and feed them.
Where is this?
Yep.
Wilson Park.
Fairway.
You know where that is.
And Fairway.
Yeah, we gotta quit doing that. I mean. They're gonna be feral cats. Let them be feral cats. Make them earn their living. Know what I mean?
Well, I have a hard time, like I have cats that come on my porch because I had crappy furniture on there. And like, they're not my cats and I never fed them, but they hang out on my.
I had the same issue with mine.
So we don't have anything, Taylor hasn't, doesn't have anything I actually reported about cats. Is that something?
We've picked up like three, I think, since.
We try not to do a whole lot with cats because to absolutely, well, they either have to return them and release them or which we would then have to do all this to it.
We don't have any place to put.
We have nowhere to put.
Well, we take the one, the few that we've had, we've taken to the vet clinic.
To the vet clinic and then I think the vet clinic has worked with animal alliance on some, and then the animal alliance.
Some that they were willing to take on after a few days from the city and they have done that, yes, but they can't continue to do it.
If this is like one passionate person, they're gonna get burned out. And like, it has to be, to me, a community wide effort that people are willing to give money and people are willing to give time, because it's not a money-making deal.
But it is, overall, it's still a health and safety issue that the city has to be aware of. And the city's responsible to do something and the code literally says that if we bring one in and it's not claimed, it's euthanized.
Yeah, but that's the point.
Everywhere. That's not just Red Oak. That's the way it is and.
And that's where the, the places like an alliance come in and say. We are willing to have a partnership with you, but I don't think it is city government money on the fourth day. If the community thinks it's important to not euthanize them, then people need to stand up. It doesn't, we are advocating for it, but there has to be a fourth day plan.
As of day four, this is what needs to happen.
Right, yeah. And if we have a place to take them, there's no reason to euthanize them. But if the community, and to me, it seems. You know, I don't know if places like Stanton and Belitska and other places, you know, I, it sounds to me like most of them ignore the calls. That's my understanding of the small communities in our county. Um.
They don't.
It's a little, and so is there as much of an incentive for them to work collectively and. You know, have some sort of a five oh one C three, but if people are not willing to give money, that's like my thing. As the leadership of the community, we have a three day obligation. And if people aren't willing to help pay for the fourth day, then that's. One message that we get and I don't think it can be on the taxpayers, but we can help.
And Jan Black filled this niche for many years, cause she just took them. She's, lives out at Hacklebarney and people know to call Jan Black.
And why doesn't she?
Because she's done it. She's over seventy and she's just ready to be done.
Right, and the animal.
But occasionally, if there's one, will, people will call her. She's still doing T N R programs for cats and dogs. And she has a vet. I don't know if that's Dr. Amy or who it is, but I think she still has a once a month.
Right, and like a lot of cities I've been in, like there's farmers that are willing to take them.
Right, but that was a.
Yeah.
Adopted.
Half the time.
Barn cat, that was a barn cat adoption.
I mean, you just basically took them off.
Yeah, took them off the.
Yeah.
You always had a few farmers.
And I would say that's what she did a lot with cats, was barn cats. But dogs is the, is, is a bigger, is a big issue just because they tend to be the ones that bite.
Yeah.
So. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I do think this will help. The population of the cats that we have, or at least.
To control the population.
It is a way to help.
I don't agree with that, but I mean, population control is the biggest.
And it also, like our current code says, if you, if you feed. A community cat, you actually should be arrested or get a, you know, a search.
That's, that's what I'm getting at, just that you're, you're promoting it to.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure what, what.
It just became your pet.
Well, I think the key for the code though is acknowledging that like you can take a cat.
Yeah.
You know, like right now, it's sort of like, if it's not your cat, what do you do with it? Like, do you have a right to it and someone could then say you're stealing it?
Yeah.
Here it's saying if it's.
If it's feral, it's feral.
Right.